I think so.
We already did this.
So I think she's going to listen.
We already did this.
Yeah, well, we probably said that.
Yeah, we already.
Test us. Council ready to start?
Yes, sir.
We'll give a moment here for Councilmember Joseph to get set up. I'll call the meeting to order. Regular city council meeting for September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America, considered republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the ideal with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Miriam Abadamas.
Here.
Councilmember Mark Joseph.
Here.
Councilmember David Oro.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pierre Washington.
Here.
Mayor Leon Garcia.
Here.
We'll move on now to report on closed session confirmation of reportable action. Mr. Ross.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, members of the public. Your council convened an open session at five thirty P. M. to ascertain if there were any public comments on the matters agendized for closed session consideration. After determining that there were none, you adjourned to closed session at five thirty P. M. and you concluded that closed session at six thirty P. M. With respect to all of the matters agendized for closed session consideration, I will accomplish a written report upon return from closed session, consistent with the provisions of Government Code Section fifty-four nine fifty-seven point one B. That would conclude the report unless there are questions.
Any questions from council?
No, sir.
Ain't none. Thank you, Mr. Ross. We'll continue. Well, first, I'd like to welcome our guests here this evening. Graduate attending. We move on to proclamations, presentations. Proclamation is September twenty twenty-three Suicide Prevention Month. Is there someone here to receive it? Please come to the podium. And thank you for being here this evening. It's important work you do. I spent much of my career in mental health, so I understand the importance of the work you do. And I'm sure we all share a feeling about that. So September twenty-third Suicide Prevention Month in American Canyon, whereas the Napa County Suicide Prevention Council, the NCSPC, a public-private collaborative of people and organizations who are dedicated to reducing stigma surrounding suicide, supporting those who have lost loved ones to suicide, identifying and advocating for resources and promoting a safe, connected, and resilient community dedicated to reducing the risk of suicide. Whereas in the last six years, NCSPC has worked tirelessly to reach their vision of a suicide-free community through education and training, stigma reduction, linkage to services, and provision of resources to combat suicide. And whereas from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty, the suicide rate in California was ten point five deaths for one hundred thousand population, and Napa County was ten point nine deaths for one hundred thousand population, placing Napa County higher than the state average. And whereas across the state in Napa County, the age group with the highest suicide rate was eighty-five years and older. The race with the highest suicide was white. The second highest was American Indian, Alaskan Native, and whereas in fiscal year FY twenty-two twenty-three, law enforcement responded to over two hundred eighty-nine calls related to suicide. In the same fiscal year, fourteen individuals completed suicide in Napa County. And whereas in FY twenty-two twenty-three, the NCSP trained nine hundred forty-one community members in the Question, Persuade, Refer QPR model of suicide prevention to help prevent suicides. And whereas every American Canyon resident can be an ally by knowing the signs of suicide, finding the words to communicate with someone, someone they are concerned about, and reaching out to local resources for help. Now, therefore, on behalf of the City Council of American Canyon, I do hereby proclaim the month of September twenty twenty-three a Suicide Prevention Month in American Canyon. Thank you for coming this evening. Proclamation for you. Thank you for what you're doing. Oh, yes, please.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Cassandra Aslamine. I'm the Deputy Director of Health and Human Services Agency for Napa County, here with Behavioral Health. And it's an honor to be here tonight with our Suicide Prevention Council Chair Jenny Olson. Through prevention and early intervention money, which is allocated from the Mental Health Services Act, we're able to backbone Mentis to deliver high-quality, high-impact suicide prevention services across the county. I'm heartened to share with you tonight that last month, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention released the twenty twenty-two suicide statistics, which show a reduction in death by suicide of eight point four percent for youth aged ten to twenty-four years old. It is my strong belief that the high-impact services provided through Mentis, including Question, Persuade, and Refer, known as QPR, which easily and quickly trains any person in suicide prevention, has assisted in making this reduction across our community. The three goals of QPR are, one, to recognize the warning signs of suicide; two, to know how to offer hope; and, three, know how to get help and save a life. This year alone, as you mentioned, Mentis has trained over nine hundred and forty-one community members in the one-hour QPR class, likely connecting many vulnerable community members to support and also likely saving lives. Together with Mentis and the City of American Canyon, we share the HHSA values of serving with a commitment, with collaboration, and with compassion to our community. Thank you for proclaiming September as Suicide Prevention Month.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cassandra. And thank you, Mayor Garcia, and council members for your valuable and important acknowledgement of Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. I'm excited to also share a few more things that we've accomplished on the Suicide Prevention Council since I took over as chair a year ago. We have more than doubled our Suicide Prevention Council membership. We have increased the number of Napa County residents who are equipped to intervene and help community members at risk for suicide. And this year, we will be launching a new means safety work group to train our community how to limit a person's access to means by which they may cause themselves harm. This includes firearm safety, overdose prevention, and opioid safety. Suicide does not discriminate. People of every age, race, ethnicity, gender, and ability can be at risk. It is especially important that we continue reaching out our vulnerable populations, including youth, older adults, veterans, and our LGBTQ plus community members. I have a flyer here that I just received in my email yesterday about how we can create safe and supportive and affirming spaces for our LGBTQ members and assist them when they may be at risk for suicide. I'll share it with the city clerk.
Thank you.
I also have a flyer for an upcoming International Survivors for Suicide Lost Day event, which we, our council members, chair. And together this year, they're working with Solano County to put on a big conference in Solano, but it's for Napa and Solano counties. We are also very close to sharing our three-year strategic plan. I wrote these notes yesterday, and today it was shared. So it's on the Napa County website, and I'll share a link with you as soon as it's ready, which we've been working on, this plan for the last two years, with learning coaches from the statewide Striving for Zero Initiative. The plan will be posted. That's old news now. It is posted and open for public comment for about a month. And then we'll put it in front of the Board of Supervisors for approval. And then we start working on an implementation plan for the three-year strategies that we've laid out. I have a copy of the draft here, one in English, one in Spanish. If you want to take a look, I'll leave that as well. And again, I really thank you for your acknowledgement and recognition of Suicide Prevention Awareness Month.
Thanks for the work you're doing there. I'd really appreciate if you could make that information available to our city offices.
I will do that.
Because I think certainly there's something there that'd be posting on our webpage.
That would be amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, please come forward.
Okay.
Thank you for what you're doing. Thank you.
Thanks.
We're going to take a picture. Yeah, we're going to come around.
Oh, okay.
That's the thing. We post this on our webpage. Next is September twenty twenty-three National Recovery Month in American Canyon. You're kidding. Well, it all falls in the line of your work, so that's perfect. Thank you. Good to have you here on this particular subject. September twenty-three Recovery Month in American Canyon. Whereas for the thirty-fourth year, the month of September is recognized nationally as Recovery Month, setting aside designated time to promote wellness through recovery for members of our community. And whereas there are millions of Americans whose lives have been transformed through recovery, who often go unrecognized. Recovery Month internationally celebrates the success, strength, and courage that it takes to live in recovery and highlights that recovery is possible. And whereas Recovery Month brings to light the ongoing need to educate others about substance use disorders, co-occurring disorders, and the effectiveness of treatment and recovery services. And whereas the City of American Canyon celebrates the dedication of addiction professionals working throughout our county who support the continuum of care necessary to meet the needs of those who in need of services. Their efforts are critical to improve the health and well-being of Napa's youth, adults struggling with addiction. And whereas the City of American Canyon continues to provide a safe and welcoming place for people to connect with providers to develop a strong and proud recovery community. Now, therefore, on behalf of the American Canyon City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of September twenty-three as National Recovery Month in the City of American Canyon and support the permanent theme, recovery is for everyone. Every person, every family, every community. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Bill Chadwick. I'm the co-chair of the Advisory Board for Alcohol and Drug Services. And as the liaison between Napa County's professional staff and the public, I know only too well how pernicious and always-present addiction is, my personal history, including. So on behalf of the Advisory Board for Alcohol and Drugs, thank you for your observation tonight of this and for your attention. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Mayor and council members. Thank you for having me. Again, my name is Cassandra Aslamine. I'm our HHSA Deputy Director with Behavioral Health. And it is an honor to represent HHSA alongside our Alcohol and Drug Board Co-Chair, Bill Chadwick, in proclaiming September's National Recovery Month. A recent study found nearly twenty-one million American people live in, I'm sorry. A recent study found nearly twenty-one million people in America are in recovery from substance use disorder. But only about thirteen percent are actively treating, receiving, and getting treated for substance use disorders at this time. The goal of Recovery Month is to promote substance use disorder treatment and the viability of achieving recovery, while also supporting the community and treatment providers who help make recovery services possible. Napa County Health and Human Services, in partnership with others, recently hosted a variety of events in honor of Recovery Month, hoping to draw awareness to substance use disorders and mainly work to eliminate the stigma that's associated with people who are seeking treatment. On September fourteenth at the HHSA campus, Behavioral Health hosted over eighty-four community participants and twenty-nine vendors who hosted tables, including our community-based provider organizations who provide substance use disorder services, including a new vendor called Archway Recovery Services, who's coming in to offer a residential substance use disorder treatment. Other providers included Ole Health, Queen of the Valley Medical Center, Salvation Army, and the Napa Opioid Safety Coalition. The event really focused on themes associated with community involvement and promoting the idea that wellness and recovery is holistic and is supported by community members, peers, family, as well as professionals. We're grateful for the City of American Canyon in proclaiming September as the National Recovery Month. Like you mentioned, recovery is for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll do a poll. Very good. Next is proclamation for National Community Planning Month. Good to have our commissioners here and director of the department. Community Planning Month, October twenty twenty-three, right around the corner here, whereas constant change affects all jurisdictions, including the City of American Canyon. And whereas community planning provides a framework to enable all residents to work together to bring positive changes with better choices on how people work and live. Whereas October is designated as National Community Planning Month by American Planning Association throughout the United States of America to remind and celebrate the contributions of sound planning. And whereas community planning in American Canyon in all its forms will maximize the health, safety, economic well-being of all people living in our community. And whereas it is essential for all American Canyon residents and business community working together with community planning staff to further our safe, caring community for today and in the future. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Leon Garcia, America, and the City Council of American Canyon do hereby proclaim October twenty-three as Community Planning Month in the City of American Canyon. Thank you for what you're doing after. Good job. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor and Council, for that proclamation. I'm Brent Cooper, Community Development Director, and very pleased tonight to have our representatives from the Planning Commission with us. We have Commissioner Davet Mohammed and Vice Chair Brando Cruz. The Planning Commission really puts the community into Community Planning Month. These are volunteer residents who provide a voice for the decisions that affect every resident for a very long time. The Planning Commission reviews all policy documents and long-range plans that come to the City Council and provide their input. And also has the role, a very important one, of reviewing many development projects and making decisions that affect the quality of life for people for a very long time. So I want to turn over and let each of our commissioners have a few words to say, but we're very proud of our commission. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Brando Cruz. I'm the Vice Sheriff for the Commission. First of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council members, for this acknowledgement and recognition. We're very excited to be part of the commission team and look forward to the continued growth of American Canyon. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Davet Mohammed, Planning Commission. Mayor Leon Garcia. Council members, thank you so much again for the opportunity to serve our community and having a lot of fun. And I'm enjoying the development in our city, watching it grow.
Thank you. Photo, yep.
He's pulling, what's his name, from the Mets.
Ben Simmons?
No, the other guy.
Quiet.
No, no, the guy who went to Dallas.
I know you're talking about.
Kyrie Irving.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's complaining about everything.
Okay, we're moving on to our agenda. We have now public comment items not on the agenda. Oh, Chamber of Commerce, I'm sorry. It's not in blueprint.
One more special guest, Mayor.
One more special guest. Chamber of Commerce, presentation from the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce. Good evening.
I do have a slideshow.
Oh, good.
Just pulled that up here. Get it to work.
There should be a presentation out there somewhere. Slide show.
From beginning, yes.
There we go.
Are we good? I try to be tech-savvy. I'm just okay at it. All right, hi, everybody. I'm Valerie Zizak-Morais, your President and CEO here at the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce. I'm here tonight to just give you a little brief overview of who we are, what we do, and how we support the American Canyon community. For those of you who don't know, we were established in nineteen ninety-four. We are a nonprofit organization that supports local business, other nonprofits, and the overall economic vitality of the American Canyon business community through several programs, including Destination Marketing and the Welcome Center. So we are three different entities. We are the Chamber of Commerce. We are the Destination Marketing Organization. And we are We are the Destination Marketing Organization, and we are also the Welcome Center. All ran out of our destination on South Napa Junction Road there at the old Palbees Junction Building. What's on the horizon for us here at the Chamber of Commerce? We are adding another entity to the list of who we are. We are launching a Workforce Foundation for Youth and workforce in general. So we are super excited about this. We are in the legal process now and hope to launch by January 2024. This is going to be a foundation that supports youth in our community by connecting them with local jobs, providing resources and program to our local schools, starting to educate children on the importance of career readiness at the age of as young as kindergarten. So we are so excited. Our Kids Commerce Program was kind of a spin-off to see if we have the support in the community to supporting youth and business and workforce, and we have determined that it was extremely successful and that there is a place in our community for this. So this is going to be a 501(c)(3) foundation where we will be able to apply for grants that will go directly to youth and workforce. We'll also be working with our large industrial area that has special budgets for types of programs like this to help get kids right from our high school directly into the local workforce with the requirements that they need to start off directly at a high school. So we're super excited. It's still very young, very new, but we are definitely seeing this as a huge added value to the community here in American Canyon, especially with supporting our future in business and workforce. We also are here to further economic development for American Canyon. As we just heard from the Planning Commission, we're under development. There's a lot of great things going on. We're here to support that process. We want to see American Canyon turn into the city that we know is best for us, which is, you know, development, and sometimes it's frowned upon when you develop a city, but we, as the Chamber of Commerce, understand the importance of development within our city to give the residents the quality of life that they deserve. So that's just a little overview of who we are, and I, give me just one second. We are a nonprofit organization, which means we are governed by a board of directors. Our Board of Directors are made up of business members of our community. So you see, we have Tom Phillips. He's retired from ecology, came on as a retired businessman who wanted to run our board, and he has the time and support to give us to keep us moving in the right direction. We have Gladys Milligan with Redwood Credit Union. She's our Pass Board Chair. We have Beth Goff with the American Canyon High School. She's our Secretary. Josh Mendoza, who is with RE/MAX here in American Canyon. He's our CFO. We have Bill Harper with Valley Wine Warehouse. David Griffiths with Evil Vine Golf Course. Michelle Ryan with Del Sur Mortgage. Janelle Selick of American Canyon Community Parks Foundation. Rick and Tyler Hess with RH Hess Development. Paul Hicks from I Pay Folks. Clarence Mamorall, he's with Mamorall Law. He's our law advice on our board. And Arvind Nishal from the UPS Store. I'm sure for any of you here in American Canyon that are familiar, you realize that these are key players throughout our community. We hand-select our board members. We pick people that understand and have the vision we have at the chamber to keep things moving in the right direction. So I'm extremely grateful for each and every one of these individuals. They are the reason our chamber is thriving today. So thank you to all of them. They are volunteers. They do not get paid, and they put up with me every day. So I'm extremely grateful. I don't have a slide on here, but we are a staff of two. I'm a full-time staff. I have Alan Quisenberry. He's a part-time staff. And then in the summer, we do take on summer interns. But all this magic that you see happening is happening with myself and one part-time, 20-hour-a-week staff. So we appreciate all the support. We appreciate the help that comes in from the community, from the high school volunteers, just from people who are willing to lend a helping hand. So I couldn't do what I do without the community. I will just make that really clear. Chamber, we are a membership-based organization. We do not receive any tax dollars. We are not a 501(c)(3). We cannot apply for grants. Every bit of money comes from either a partnering organization or business who pays a membership to the Chamber of Commerce. So these are all of our high-level partners. These businesses are paying us $1,500 or more per year, and we like to give them a little bit of extra love because they are the reason our chamber doors are open. We have 265 members total in our chamber. We have a lot of small businesses and a lot of nonprofits. We value every single membership that comes through the Chamber of Commerce and all of our partners here in the community, but I love to get a special thanks to our impact partners because they are the ones making sure that everything we are doing is being funded. So every one of these businesses, if you aren't familiar with them, they are key players in your community. They're giving back and they're supporting even if you don't visually see it. What the community knows us for? Well, I think we can all agree that Meet Me in the Street has become one of the most popular summer items for American Canyon. We are the creators of that event. We created it specifically to connect business with community after hearing over and over from our small business community the lack of connection with our residents. As a resident of American Canyon, I understand that we're always looking for something fun to do and gather with our friends here in town. So we provided a fun and safe place for the community to gather. We supporting local entrepreneurs. We're connecting residents with county services. If you haven't been out to Meet Me in the Street, there is everything that you could ever want or need or any resource that is available throughout this county shows up at Meet Me in the Street and makes sure that our community understands the resources that they have and are connected with these services. We promote nonprofits throughout the entire valley. I was proud to have the Vittners out there this year, along with five Napa County agencies. It's a big deal when we can bring Napa County down to American Canyon in rush hour traffic. So we're doing something right. They're seeing the value. They're excited to come down and support Meet Me in the Street, and we're excited to have this platform out there. You know, providing the platform to highlight local business and youth organizations is something that is near and dear to my heart as the Chamber CEO. And with the success of Meet Me in the Street, we see that this is something that the community needed. So if you haven't been to Meet Me in the Street, we do it the second Wednesday of June, July, and August. We're attracting close to 8,000 people, 175 vendors in nonprofit business tables. We also had 40 food trucks out there this year, different food vendors. And of course, we have the support of the City of American Canyon, our police department, our Public Works. They're all out there helping us, making sure we're keeping the event safe. We're keeping it family-friendly, and we're super proud of what has come to light for Meet Me in the Street. But once again, that event could never happen if we did not have the partners with our community and with the local business community. So super excited about Meet Me in the Street. The other thing that we've become very popular for is our Kids Commerce. So this is the first year we did Kids Commerce, and if you pay attention to the council meetings frequently, you probably saw me back in about maybe February, standing up here asking for support from the City of American Canyon for a youth entrepreneurship program, which we were so thankful to have the support. You see the picture up here on the screen, right here in these chambers. We awarded 25 business licenses to children from the ages of eight to 18 years old. They are all students here in American Canyon, and you can find them out on Meet Me in the Streets, selling all their items. This program has become so popular that my email is on fire every day, people wanting to get into Kids Commerce, and we just can't wait to see how it continues to grow, especially when we're able to get the grant money through that Workforce Foundation for youth entrepreneurs, and that's going to be game changer for this program. We did have a couple of large donors this year help us with permitting and items that the kids need, and the city graciously waived the fees for the kids, but any additional funding we can get is going to be absolutely phenomenal for this program. How do we support our membership business? Of course, our number one, that's why we're here. Advocacy at local county and state levels. I'm sure you've all seen me up here, you know, advocating for projects, you know, stating reasons why it's important to support local business, why it's important to support these new projects that are coming to town. That's something that I take a lot of pride in, is, you know, helping develop what we know is best for American Canyon. So I do actually really enjoy that portion of the job, but it doesn't just happen here locally. We are doing county and state advocacy at the same time. Economic development and retention, you know, that word gets thrown around a lot, economic development. What's it mean? It means having a strong economic economy, making sure you're developing as your city grows, and providing the right resources to your community. So we take pride in making sure that businesses come here, but they also stay here as well. We work with law enforcement to create a safe environment for business. We've purchased six block cameras that live out on the Green Island Industrial Air to keep that area safe. We also encourage our businesses to work closely with our local police department to make sure they're safe as possible within their space. And of course, we get our support from our local law enforcement by showing up to Meet Me in the Street, making sure we got a strong police presence there, keeping the traffic safe, keeping the event safe. So I have a great relationship, or at least I feel I do, with the American Canyon Police Department, and we're every day thankful for what they do for this community. We also promote American Canyon as a destination. So we do all the destination marketing. We run the Welcome Center. We see visitors from all over the world, pass out our maps, let everybody know where they should be visiting in American Canyon. We're working behind the scenes to solve workforce issues, childcare issues, affordable housing, and transportation, which are the most popular issues throughout this county. And we have several different coalitions we're working on to try to solve those problems. If you've watched any of our candidate forums, we're the ones that put those on, helping give all these great council members questions, so the community can get to know them and get to understand who they're voting for. Connecting business with community, you'll hear me saying that over and over again. It's something I really stand for. Welcoming new business to American Canyon. You'll see us around town, cutting those ribbons with the support of the City Council. Great way to welcome new business to town. We do networking, business-to-business, chamber-to-business, and chamber-to-chamber. So we have several events that are specifically for businesses to network, get to know each other, and we love to, outside of our events, just network with businesses, connect each other as needed to make everybody thrive. We also support nonprofits. I take a lot of pride in helping our local nonprofits. We support them with whatever unexpected needs that come up. We promote through our digital communications. We print for them inside of our office, and we're just here to kind of guide them and help them through any struggles. We're professional business, you know, working with businesses and other nonprofits. We're also paid nonprofits, so we know the ins and outs and we know the struggles, but we have the time to invest into our other nonprofits in town and just help them be a little bit more successful. So I take pride in, I don't turn any of our nonprofits away. We have a scholarship program designed for nonprofits. If you can't afford the membership, we take you on so we can work directly with you. How do we make a difference? We collaborate. This top picture here, one of my favorites. It shows me collaborating with the City of American Canyon. We're not part of the city, but we work very closely with the city. If we didn't collaborate at the level we did, we wouldn't be able to accomplish a lot of the things that we do. We also work closely with the county. We work with different agencies. We work with the other Chamber of Commerce's in the county. That second picture is one of my favorites. It is all the Napa County Chamber CEOs together in one photo. We started a Chamber Coalition during the pandemic. I've been a big supporter of that. I am currently the Board Chair of the Coalition, and to all be together in one photo just shows you how we're working across the county to work together. Even though each one of our cities are different, we know the power we have together as a coalition. So I'm very proud of that work as well. We also, you know, the Chamber participates in other organizations to make sure we're bringing the knowledge and resources to business. So if I'm not connected to other agencies and resources, the businesses don't have the tools that they need to be successful. Connecting business in schools, you know, you think business, you automatically think adults, but really, you know, these kids got to grow up and they're going to end up in some business somewhere, and it's good to give them the knowledge that they need. So launching the Youth and Workforce Foundation. Local, we put the local art in our Welcome Center and do little events with the local artists here in town that are all coming from the high school. We assist with the local PTA and PTOs with business support. We take interns in our office. We also place interns in other businesses in the community. We have a lot of volunteer opportunities for the local youth in American Canyon, and we help the youth become entrepreneurs with our Kids Commerce. And also I work to mentor the high school key club in different ways to provide them with the knowledge that they need if they want to go out and continue nonprofit work. How do we spend our time? Well, as you see, there isn't a dull moment in my world, but we are on several different committees. We run the Economic Business Development, the Government Affairs Committee, the American Canyon Executives Networking, the Member Engagement Team. I'm part of the Napa Valley Chamber Coalition, the Green Island Road Industrial District. I have recently joined the Measure A2 Bond Oversight Committee for the school district. I sit on the Napa Valley Transportation Tax Oversight Committee, the Tourism Business Improvement District Board Chair, the Community Calendar Meeting, Guest Information Networking, the Napa County Collaborative, and the Napa Valley Hospitality Industry Partners. Those are just some of the committees that I'm sitting on to do some of this work that I listed before. You know, if you're not involved and you're not sitting at the table, you're not going to get anything done. So I take pride in accepting pretty much every offer I have to a committee if it falls within the mission work of the chamber. Events and programs. Meet Me in the Street, that's the most famous. We do ribbon cuttings, chamber coffee chat, business social, Small Business Week, Job Fairs, Restaurant Week, Candidates Forums, Halloween in the Plaza. We partner with the city for the magic of the season. We bring the holiday marketplace. We partner with Napa Valley for the Mustard Festival and recently our Kids Commerce. So those are just a few programs and events that we're doing throughout the year. And what are we proud of? The American Canyon Chamber of Commerce is proud to be a local organization that anyone in the community can turn to for guidance and direction. Whether you are a new business, a resident of our city working to get connected, a business navigating through challenges, or local nonprofit needing support and education, we are here for you. Our doors are always open to each and every citizen in American Canyon. And that's who we are as the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce. So thank you to Jason Hawley for inviting me, to Leon Mayor Garcia for having me tonight, and the council members for endlessly standing, sitting here patiently and listening to me. Just spread the word of the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce. I'm extremely passionate about my job and what I do, and I appreciate the support of everybody here in American Canyon that allow me to continue to guide the way and really bring business to light in American Canyon. So thank you very much. I appreciate everything.
Oh. Thank you for the presentation. I just look forward to many of the things you have on your very busy agenda, but you know, it's all very positive stuff.
Yes, it's positive.
Never too busy, yes. No, I just, I really appreciate the dedication also to getting it done. It's about reaching out and working with people in the community and listening, listening a lot, and also sharing information that helps. So good. Very good. Thank you. Can't wait to see the next thing you got in order.
I'm sure I'll be here asking for some feedback later.
Oh, yes, you will. I have no doubt about that. But you know, we're working together on it.
Thank you for what you do.
Okay, any public comment items not on the agenda?
I have not received, I haven't received no speaker forms. I do have someone with a hand up online.
Okay. We'll take the individual online.
Okay. Justin, go ahead.
Hi, Teresa. This is Justin.
Good evening. Could you turn the volume up a little bit, please?
Yes, you may.
Closer to the mic.
Can I hear me?
That's a little better, yes.
Well, I'm going to shout out with, I'm going to shout out with Gritti and Erica. And I'm just, I have to wait till two a year to get the...
I'm sorry, Justin. I really can't hear you. I don't, anybody else? Can we turn up the volume on his mic?
Can I hear me?
If you can get closer to the microphone. Go ahead. Did we lose you?
He should still be there. It was doing something weird, so I took him off the screen, but he's still... Justin, are you there? Oh, he's gone.
Want to give him a minute, see if he can get back on? Oh, while we're waiting for the...
He is back.
He's back? Good. Okay.
Justin, go ahead.
Go ahead, Justin, please.
I want to shout out with, I'm going to shout out with Gritti and Erica to get the pay and drink going. And I did call them this week, and I see they're going to do the pay beside my house. I think Gritti just told me my side of how... to do the pay beside my house. I think Gritti just told me my society house not going to pay will not work on till 2025. That is correct. I'm not sure.
Okay.
For two years.
All right. Very good. Thank you. And the sound is working a lot better now, so just remember that for next time we have an issue with sounds coming through the internet. Thank you for adjusting that.
As can be different for various speakers.
Yes, understood, yeah. Okay, very good. Anybody else online?
No one else online.
Okay. No written requests submitted?
Not for this. Items not on the agenda.
Okay, very good. Anybody in the audience wishing to comment? Public comment, anything not on the agenda? Seeing none? Very good. Then we'll close public comment on this matter. We'll move on to agenda changes. If there's no item to be pulled by council, we'll accept the motion for the consent calendar.
So moved. Oh, second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you, council. Moving on now to public hearings, amended purchasing
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, members of the public, Juan Gomez, Finance Director for the city. And tonight, I'm pleased to bring forward our city purchasing policy and procedures discussion, as is various other departments throughout the city, hoping to bring some efficiency to the way we procure goods and services. So hopefully, this, we have some action items here as well, which we'll go through and explain some of those. So we'll talk about the purchasing policy here, the purpose of it. It achieves several things. One, it provides guidance to staff on how to properly procure goods and services. We're talking about the number of bids that a person should be obtaining from a potential contractor or vendor, when to get the appropriate authorization limits, either through the city manager or through the city council. It delegates purchasing authority limits from the city council to the city manager and staff. You'll see later on how some of the proposed changes that we're proposing are going to provide some efficiencies to the way we procure items. It incorporates best practices and ethical guidelines and responsibilities. So this is items on when an employee should recuse themselves, if they have any financial interest in a company that's potentially bidding on a city contract and so forth. Also, when we're procuring or using federal funds, the code of federal regulations requires us to have some of these guidelines in place so that we ensure that there isn't anything array going on and so forth. So this is part of that as well. Now, I want to run through the purchase policy objectives first. It is to provide a uniform system to obtain supplies, materials, equipment, and services in an efficient and timely manner. Some of the changes that you'll see that I'm proposing or that we're proposing here today will include some efficient processes and some some new procedures that will, again, allow us to quickly and efficiently provide, procure goods and services, to ensure equal opportunity and competition among suppliers and contractors. This is essentially getting the right number of bids that we need, putting out notices to contractors and trade journals, making sure that everybody out there that is a potential bidder has the opportunity to bid on our proposals, and then to promote effective relationships and clear communication between the city and its suppliers. This outlines several things like payment terms, when insurance is needed, when a contractor or vendor should get a business license requirements or a business license, and then to comply with the comprehensive state and federal procurement statutes, which govern expenditures of public funds. And then finally, last but not least, is to obtain maximum benefit from every dollar spent. Now, again, these are public funds. We need to be cognizant of that and make sure that we're out there doing our due diligence, vetting contractors, vendors, and bids, et cetera. So here, I'm going to talk about some of the proposed policy changes. There are four of them. The first one, we are proposing to increase the delegated authority to the city manager. New language on additional procurement methods. You'll see that we're proposing language that wasn't in the previous policy, but this is so that it's clearer to staff that is out there procuring that not necessarily, they have to go out there and obtain bids or quotes, but there's other procurement methods that they're able to use. And then language conforming with Senate Bill 1383. Senate Bill 1383 was a law that went into effect in 2022. The primary goal of that law was to divert organic waste from the landfill. As you know, we have food scraps that go now into the green bins, et cetera. That was the primary purpose of SB 1383. Among other things, it included some procurement requirements for governments and agencies. And then the election of the city council to participate in the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act. Here or not, I'll just reference it as KUPCA instead of saying the whole thing. Now, essentially what that is, is that is the, it sets standards for public construction contracts. The authority limits, when we're supposed to go out there and get bids, when we're supposed to do informal bidding procedures, when we're supposed to do formal bidding procedures. Among other things is maintain a list of contractors to have available and perform some public construction work. And then finally, not a policy change per se, but the removal of Chapter 3.12, the Purchasing System, from the City Municipal Code. This is why this item here today is a public hearing, is because we have, we need an ordinance, we need a first reading, a second reading to remove this chapter from the municipal code. So the first proposed change is increased delegated authority to the city manager. As you can see here, the current policy is $25,000 for goods, supplies, and equipment. We are proposing an amended policy to give the city manager authorization to $100,000. Services currently is $50,000, and we are proposing that that limit be raised to $100,000. Now, just on a side note here, is that that current policy allows the city manager to enter into change orders amendments up to 20%. So essentially, that $25,000 limit is actually $30,000, and that $50,000 limit can be up to with additional change orders, $60,000. Now, why are we proposing this? Well, the current limits have been in place since 2007. Since then, the CPI in the San Francisco Bay Area has increased 56%. What $100 was needed, $100 needed in 2007 to purchase anything, goods and services, now requires $156. New limits will provide the city manager with increased authority to reflect the current cost of services. Not only have the cost of goods and services increased, but also as the city expands and the city has grown, we require more goods and more services. As more employees come online, as we require more maintenance to city buildings, streets, facilities, et cetera, we require more services and goods. So we also are proposing that, as you've seen here, that $100,000 for both goods and services, that the limit be equivalent. There are times where we we have a proposal that includes both the purchase of goods and the associated services with that. And to kind of separate those and wonder, okay, this, the goods only require $25,000 limit, and I have $50,000 for goods. If the services are more than $50,000, but the goods are less, then that would require us to bring it to council. Here, we want to be uniform, have $100,000 for both goods and services. Now, I just want to provide some examples here of how these increases have manifested over the last couple of years here. In 2007, the cost for audit services, which we require on a yearly basis, was $34,000 in 2007. Those same audit services in 2023 by our firm is $57,000. So that's an increase of 68%. Our police interceptors in 2007, the cost of a police vehicle before any outfitting, just purchasing it from the manufacturer, was $24,620. And then in 2023, that cost of that police interceptor is $48,176. So you can see that increase was 90, 95% there. Granted, in 2007, they weren't exactly the same vehicles. They were Crown Victorias, and then now they're Ford Explorers, but you can see that those Crown Victorias are no longer available, so we have to go into the Explorer police interceptors. This is not some illicit substance here, but this is sodium hydroxide, which is used to treat water. You can see that 100 dry tons of sodium hydroxide in 2007 costs $39,000, and in 2023, that same 100 dry tons is now a thousand dollars a ton at $100,000. So an increase of 255. So this is just one example. There are other treatment chemicals that we use in our water facility plant. So you can see that the increases in costs for everything has just gone up. So that's why one of the proposals here today is to increase city manager's authority limit. So this is what that would look like here. The department heads are able to purchase items up to $25,000, and that requires three informal proposals. The city manager would go from $25,000 to $100,000. Anything over $100,000 here would require council approval. As you can see here, anything over $100,000 per policy would require formal proposals, that is a RFP, a request for proposal, an RFQ, request for qualifications, or an ITB, which is an invitation to bid. So some of the additional language that we are proposing, again, that kind of was not in the original policy, is one is cooperative purchasing agreements. What these are essentially are piggyback agreements. These are procurements that have already been vetted through the process. The bids, the specifications, et cetera, has already been done by another government agency, and what we're doing is essentially piggybacking on that procurement so that we can use an efficient process and not have to reinvent the wheel, but kind of just use that same procurement process that they've had. Some of the vendors that we use for cooperative purchase agreements are Sourcewell, NASPO, and Omnia. Sourcewell is a government agency in the state of Minnesota, so they do a lot of procurements throughout the state of Minnesota. A lot of agencies throughout the country use that Sourcewell function in order to piggyback on a lot of the procurements. Soul Source purchases, wanted to add clarifying language into the purchasing policy on Soul Source. Soul Source is essentially a good or service that can ideally only be procured by one vendor. One vendor makes the product, only one vendor sells it. We can't go out there and get bids from other retailers or so forth, so we have to buy from this. This is going to bypass the other purchasing methods in terms of getting bids, ITBs, RFPs, et cetera. And we wanted to add clarifying language on emergency purchases. Now, an emergency purchase was not necessarily clearly identified in the previous policy. Here, what we're saying is an emergency purchase is for an emergency, a public disaster or an emergency declaration, a public health, welfare, or safety would be greatly hampered if there is undue delay in the procurement of materials and services. This is not that a department somewhere forgot to purchase something, and they come to finance, and all of a sudden need an emergency PO. This is a true emergency. So what happens here with emergency purchases, it completely bypasses everything. RFPs against bids, et cetera. There's an emergency out there. We need to procure these products now, and it's important and vital that we get them now, so we'll deal with it after the fact. One thing we've included here is that anything over $100,000 would require an after-the-fact city council ratification. So again, there are limits. This is not that we're trying to give the city manager or staff this unreasonable authority here to go buy anything they want. There are checks and balances. There's a lot of, you know, when vendors work with government agencies, they feel there's a lot of red tape. We're trying to kind of make it easier and more efficient for our staff and the vendors to work together and efficiently procure goods and services. And our third proposal here is new language conforming with SB 1383. Again, SB 1383 was signed in 2020 and became law in 2022, again, diverting organic waste from landfills. It also required some, it also had some procurement requirements, and those requirements were that paper products purchased, what they call if the fitness and quality are equal in the same, or are equal or lesser, that we should actively be purchasing those products. What that means is all our copy paper, all our printing paper, toiletry paper, et cetera. There should be a minimum amount of recyclable post-consumer fiber in those products. And then also, the purchase of eligible compost and mulch for landscape maintenance wherever available and meeting quality standards. So we're looking, the law is looking for us as government agencies to set an example and purchase these goods and service, these goods that are, you know, of recycled material and not contribute adversely to the environment. And finally, it's again, elect to participate in KUPCA. It's a legislation that was enacted in 1983. Again, it was designed to help uniformity in cost accounting standards and bidding procedures for public contracts. It's a voluntary program, so there is a resolution that we're asking city council to adopt tonight so that we can opt into this act. And we'll go a little bit more into here and what the benefits are. The KUPCA thresholds here are public projects less than $60,000 can be performed by public agencies' force account, means by their own labor, their own employees, and then, or negotiated contract or by purchase order. Public projects of $200,000 or less may use the informal bidding procedures. Public projects more than $200,000 shall use the formal bidding procedures. I will quickly want to touch on those. Informal is we put out some requests, we send out some emails, we make some phone calls, we request some proposals for some bids for a product, a project that we're working on. Formal bidding procedures is that we advertise this in the newspaper. There's sealed bids, there's an opening. There's certain, a lot of more requirements in formal bidding procedures. So there's a difference. This is part of the act here. And then we also must maintain a list of qualified contractors. The act requires us to have a list of qualified contractors. Now, there is a list, if we go to like the State Contractors Board, et cetera, we can find electricians, contractors, general contractors, et cetera. So we must maintain a list. When we're advertising for a project, then we should be notifying those contractors on our list via directly or via trade journals. So the difference between those limits that you currently saw is that, right now, anything under $50,000 requires informal bids. If we opt into the act, it would require anything under $200,000. So that limit goes from $50,000 to $200,000. Anything greater than $50,000 currently, we require formal bids. So we require that 14, I think it's 14-day notification in the newspaper, and then we require the sealed bids. We allow some time for the contractors to submit their proposals, et cetera. So you can see that limit now went from $50,000 again to $200,000. Now, some of the benefits of opting into KUPCA is that we can complete small projects in a shorter amount of time. Those projects under $200,000, we can quickly procure by just calling some contractors on our list, submitting, they submit their informal proposals, and we're good to go. We don't have to wait for the waiting period in the formal bids, et cetera. Again, expediting contracts for projects under $200,000, we reduce the administrative burden. Some of the participation here is that there's 291 cities throughout the state that participate in KUPCA. 1,563 public agencies, that includes a lot of school districts, special districts, et cetera. We do have four neighbors here in Napa County that participate in KUPCA, Yountville, Calistoga, St. Helena, and the county of Napa. So this is what the limits for public works projects would look like. So anything $60,000 or less, again, that threshold here, can be negotiated by contract or performed by city employees. The public works director here has authority up to $25,000. up to twenty five thousand, uh, up to two hundred thousand dollars, three informal proposals. Again, based on our limits that you saw earlier, we're proposing that, again, the city manager's limit remain at a hundred thousand dollars. And then council would be, um, we would submit to council the proposal over a hundred thousand dollars. And then again, certainly anything over two hundred thousand dollars would go to the city council. And then this is, uh, the removal of chapter three twelve, the purchasing system from the city municipal code. Again, the purchasing policy is an administrative policy. It is maintained by the finance director and is approved by the city council. It provides guidance to city staff on how they should procure goods and services. And then again, it, it sets the authorization limits for the city manager and city staff. Uh, the reason we are proposing that we remove it from the municipal code is that, uh, it, they don't always align, uh, currently. So the current policy has been in place since two thousand and seven. There's been changes to the policy since then, small changes to the policy, but the municipal code has not changed. And the municipal code is a little more, more, uh, difficult to, to change in that it requires two, two ordinance readings, and then it requires thirty days after the second ordinance to take effect. With the policy, we can take it to council, we can get a resolution, and now the policy has been changed. Uh, it is again, uh, less administratively burdensome to amend the policy versus the municipal code. And essentially, what we want to do is maintain one document, one document on the city's purchasing methods and limits so that staff is clear, they go to one place, they don't, they don't have to look at the policy. And if there's conflicting, um, information in the policy and in the municipal code, we're not fielding and, uh, questions in finance onto which is the current. Uh, certainly, the municipal code would, would supersede, uh, and that, that has caused some, some issues in the past. So here are our staff recommendations and our next step. Um, we have a couple of action items that, uh, we're recommending here the council take is one, waive the first reading, read by title only, only, and adopt the ordinance, adopt the resolution approving the revised purchasing policy and procedures, and adopt the resolution electing to participate in KUKA. So some of the next steps here is to submit, uh, the KUKA resolution to the state controller's office. Uh, KUKA is administered by the state controller, so we would need to submit that resolution to the state controller. Um, being that this policy affects every department in the city, we would need to provide some training to the department. Um, we would, we've already started working on, on some training mainly with, uh, the department in public works, uh, as they have a lot of, um, of, um, bids and, and so forth. And then at the October fifth meeting, uh, council would read the second reading of the ordinance to the municipal code. We would begin compiling a pre-qualification list for contractors as required by KUKA. And we would develop a report for qua- quarterly city council reporting on POs. Um, this is something that came out of our finance subcommittee where the mayor and, and vice mayor would have liked to see, would like to see us reporting to council on a quarterly basis, since that authority limit for the city manager is increasing from twenty-five and fifty to a hundred thousand dollars, that it just gives you some visibility on, on what the departments are purchasing and so forth, uh, since that limit has changed. And then incorporate the new policy into the Open Gov procurement module. Uh, we did purchase, um, an Open Gov procurement module, uh, to go with our Open Gov budgeting software. Uh, that kicked off last Monday, and that allows us to some, to request bids, to request solicitations online. They submit them online. It's paperless. We're not, they're not, they're not overnighting, uh, bids and trying to get them in, in time, uh, before the, the bid window closes. Uh, it gives us visibility in terms of maintaining contracts, knowing when the, uh, insurance expires and so forth. So it's, it's a lot more efficient, uh, system that, that we'll be able to use, um, to, to purchase those goods and services. So with that, uh, that concludes, uh, my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Mr. Gomez. That's very good. And, uh, just for council's benefit, uh, we did, uh, with the finance committee, uh, have this, uh, presentation earlier. Uh, it's good information. Thank you. Any comment or questions, uh, from, uh, council before we open the public hearing?
Sure.
Councilmember Joseph.
First of all, going to KUKA, uh, we see the benefits of it, but essentially, what's the cost? Uh, my understanding is there's, or, or what do, what do we have to do to, to achieve that beyond just the training and getting it approved through the state controller's office? Isn't there more work associated with the cost accounting systems, setting up rates and so on?
Uh, not any more than what we currently do. So our purchasing policy and the procedures and the processes that we currently have in place, uh, already kind of coincide with the requirements of KUKA. So there isn't any additional, um, any additional work needed for, for that.
Okay. Well, that's good to hear. Uh, going to the delegation signing authority, uh, I appreciate the idea of a quarterly report, um, because one of the concerns I have is that's a, a, you know, a hundred grand is a big level of authority. And these procedures tend to define how staff interacts, the processes they need to do, but it doesn't necessarily involve any council direction and council policy and guidance. And so trying to figure out how to say this without being too accusatory, uh, you can do a whole lot with a hundred thousand dollars. And in my head, the concept is the council says, we want you to accomplish certain things. You have a spending authority in order to make it happen. But if we're not consulted on what we want to do, that authority is still there. So where I'm heading is, I think the council needs to revisit its fiscal policies to make sure that that guidance, that big-picture policy and, and philosophies are out there and documented, and that they interface with the more procedural aspects of what you're proposing. Uh, and sometime back, I think councilmember Oro and I had worked on the governance protocols and kind of streamed them down. And the other big issue was fiscal policies. And so what I'd like to suggest to my colleagues is that we give some serious thought about, uh, either resurrecting that ad hoc committee, or in some fashion, you know, going through our governance protocols, clean them up, and, and really focus on fiscal policies. Not, not the mechanical side of purchasing, not those procedures, but more philosophy of budgeting, philosophy of fiscal controls and oversights, accountability, and so those kinds of bigger policy issues. Uh, because I do think we've got to, you know, improve in that area. Yeah, you know, like I said, I, I'm, I'm encouraged by the quarterly report to see what the purchase orders are, because I do think there needs to be some transparency and accountability. And I'm worrying a little bit that we're slowly but surely moving towards a level of, uh, we're doing, spending a lot of money without necessarily a lot of transparency. And so that's, those are my two concerns, that I think the council needs to, uh, clarify its fiscal policies on the one hand, and on the other hand, make sure we have that transparency and accountability to the voters and to the, to the customers.
Yeah. I'll, I'll say this, that, um, the, one of, one of, uh, the finance department's roles is to, when we get a request to, for a department to purchase, uh, anything, is that we, we cross-check it against the budget, right? And the budget is, is vetted, uh, by council. It's on our website. It's transparent. Uh, if we're saying we're going to purchase a hundred thousand dollars in, in water meters, and that's the line item that's been allocated and presented to council and sent, and approved by council, then we in, in finance are not going to let a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in water meters, for example, be expensed. We're going to ask for a budget, we're going to ask for a budget amendment. Uh, so that's one of the checks that we have in place. Budget amendments over a hundred thousand, over, over a hundred thousand dollars of that line items would, would come to council. Uh, either, usually what we try to do is lump them all up and bring them in through, through the mid-year, uh, process. Uh, but there are checks and balances. And, and again, um, the same number of goods, um, I, I, I hear councilmember Joseph, but the same number of goods that we procured since the policy was last visited in two thousand and seven, uh, those same goods have gone up fifty-six percent. So, um, we're not buying any more widgets than we did in two thousand and seven. They're just costing a whole lot more. But there are, there are checks and balances. We do also have our, our transparency portal, which is open to the public. You can go in there and see, uh, what we're spending our, our, the, the public funds on as well.
Okay. Uh, technically, a fifty-six percent increase only gets you to seventy-five grand, but
Right.
argue over the math as much. Like I said, my concern is the two issues, that the council needs to revisit their fiscal policies and make sure they, they interface. And then secondly, we need to be sensitive about transparency and, and accountability. So...
Okay. Councilmember Oro.
Okay, my math is horrible. I had it at thirty-nine thousand dollars, not seventy-five, so I'm just going to trust that you're right. The committee on policy procedures, I turned in my last assignment. I don't know where it is. It's still alive. We need to just kick it back up, and I think it's between you, me, and Jason. So, uh, you know, that's something that's just kind of gone on the lower priority list. Listen, I, 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 I'm thinking that yes, that number needs to go up, and if it's up by inflation, then seventy-five thousand is the number. Well, and I agree with you that we need to look at the fiscal policies and our policies and procedures and all of that, because as I was diving into that document, uh, it was the policies, what's the official name? It's policies and, and governance.
Protocols.
Yeah. And I'm just going to tell the public that that is a thick and heavy document. If you're ever behind the dais, do not get on that committee, um, because it's tough. Uh, but we're trying to lighten it. We're trying to streamline it. And then, but it is valuable, um, in terms of setting the agenda for, setting the agenda, setting the guidance, setting the governance for the council, and we ought to revisit that. What I don't want to do, though, is, I want to commit to that.
Yeah.
But I don't want to slow this process down here either, uh, because I think it is a fair ask by staff, just because of inflation, and just because it was the year two thousand and seven, um, which is, you know, we're coming up on twenty years on that pretty close here. So sixteen years, and a lot has happened since then, you know. So... But I do have a question, um, because I'm not concerned, but semi-concerned. Give me examples of things that would have to come to the council because you're stuck at a twenty-five thousand dollar limit. And I want an example of anything that's twenty-five thousand and one dollar to a hundred thousand, right? And give me a three to five examples of where you think this slowed the process, is really just a bunch of bureaucracy and could have helped you out a little bit.
Uh, example A would be item number ten on your consent calendar. Uh, this evening it's right at a hundred, but, um, there's an example of an item that was budgeted already. Uh, there's a particular manufacturer
Your microphone.
Uh, makes those
Your microphone?
Sorry. Uh, agenda item number ten, annual water meter purchases. That was the reference that Juan made in his presentation. So here, this item was budgeted, uh, in the budget. Uh, we've already made the policy decision about repairing and replacing things, including water meters. These are enterprise funds. And, um, in this case, there's not, there's not a, it's a sole source because we only have one kind of meter. We can't swap out all our meters with a different kind. So we go to one particular vendor, there, there's only one vendor who has these, uh, this year. It's a hundred thousand dollars. It's been the standard number we've used over the last several years to replace water meters. Um, and so, you know, this is an example of a staff report, um, and a process, you know, probably took two to three hours worth of staff time, uh, to pull together. We probably copied and pasted the staff report from last year, so this wasn't a brand-new staff report. Um, but it's an example of something on the consent calendar that wouldn't have to be on the consent calendar. Um, I'm sure there are others in prior, prior packets, but there's, there's one, um, right here.
Well, if you're talking about making my council packet lighter, then you have my vote, so...
Um, but these are budgeted items, and I think
Yeah, they're budgeted items. I mean, so tell me something that is twenty-five thousand to a hundred that wasn't budgeted, that may come before you. And Jason says, here's ninety-nine thousand dollars, and I have authority for that.
If it's not budgeted, then I wouldn't have the authority for that.
Okay.
We would come to the council and say, our plan has changed. Uh, the budget is the plan for the year. So if it was unplanned, unbudgeted, we, for more than one dollar, uh, we would come back to the council and say, we've had an unexpected expense. We want to do something different, what have you. Um, we'd like to create, uh, an additional budget to then go and do something, and we would have to show the source of funds. Is that coming from the general fund? And does it have a fund balance? Is it coming from one of the enterprise funds? Are we maybe not going to do something else and, and use those funds, for example? So, um, if it wasn't budgeted, there isn't, I don't have any, I don't have any spending authority for something that's not budgeted, so...
So in plain language, it's not a blank check for you?
No, not, none of this is, this is the opposite of a blank check. We already have systems in place. This is really procedural. And so it's, um, back in two thousand and seven, the procedures were at a lower dollar amount. Now we're saying it makes sense to have them at a, at a higher dollar amount. The result will be less staff reports and from a council on, on a particular vendor for buying stuff, or a particular consultant.
Yeah. And, and, you know, I think there's, as a package of all these purchasing policy and procedures, you know, we, we talk about removing red tape, or people complain about government bureaucracy, and if this moves us closer to getting rid of that, um, I could be in favor of it. Thank you for answering my questions.
Sure.
Any other questions?
It does move us, um, towards that. Uh, again, just to add real quick, is that we are audited, uh, every year. The auditors, uh, do what's called a budget-to-actual variance. Uh, if they see that, uh, based on their thresholds that they're testing, if they see something that stands out, like we, we, we were only budgeted for fifty thousand in a particular line item, and we spent two hundred and fifty thousand, they're going to question that. They're going to want to see the invoices. Uh, that's going to be one of their findings that they'll see, is that you didn't have budget authority to spend this. Uh, hence, that's going to be a finding. So, um, that is some of the checks and balances in, in terms of also having our auditors and, you know, a lot of bondholders and so forth, and, and the public rely on an audit, a clean audit. And they, they rely on the auditor's opinion to make sure that what we're presenting in the financial statements and what we said we were going to spend based on the budget to what we actually did is, is in line.
I'll just add our award-winning audit. For the last several years, we've won.
Any other questions from, uh, council this time? All right. We'll open the public hearing then. Public hearing is open.
Um, Beth Marcus, not that anybody gives a hoot of my, my opinion, but I just want to say, I think it was a fantastic, uh, presentation. It was clear, concise. I understood it. If I understood it, I guess everybody else did. It's a great job.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Anybody online?
I have no hands raised.
Okay. Last opportunity for public comment. Seeing none, hearing none. Public comment is now closed on this public hearing. Can we move to council for further discussion beside action? Councilmember Joseph.
Well, like I said, I, I, I think the process that's outlined here is, is not a bad process. There's some things that are covered. I appreciate, uh, councilmember Oro's willingness to reengage on the, on the protocols, or maybe that sense of, I have to, whether I, he may not be excited about it, but, uh, but you owe me one. So if we resurrect that ad hoc committee, uh, and work through some of those fiscal policies and streamline it, then, then that makes me good, because the process is fine here. It's just that interface like that I'm talking about with our, the council's policies that need to be cleaned up. And, and so I appreciate your, your reluctant commitment to, to work on that committee with us.
Collegial, collegial committee. Yes, yes. We're going to work together. Thank you.
I'll buy coffee.
Good. All right. Well, thank you very much, then. Uh, what do we have? We have a couple of resolutions here?
Yeah, there's no other
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see my light flashing there.
David, you can still make the motion, councilmember Oro. I just wanted to say that, like, my initial concern when I talked to Jason about the agenda was also transparency. Um, but we already are approving these things through the budget process, so it's not like Jason has a blank check. So I just agree with you guys' conversation. That's why I stayed quiet. Sometimes I feel like I have to justify that. And, and great presentation, by the way. Thank you.
I think the transparency, uh, portal on our webpage also gives public awareness of how it's being spent.
Yeah. And councilmember Oro, if you're, if you're not interested in that, um, policy subcommittee anymore, I'll, I'll jump on.
Okay.
Uh, if there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three, next in order, a resolution of the city council of the City of American Canyon adopting amended purchasing policy and procedures.
I'll second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Oh, do we have to do the ordinance first?
It'd be better
Sorry, I missed the ordinance first.
Be better if we do the ordinance first, please.
Okay.
I will remove my motion and, um, restate a new, uh, motion to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-three, next in order, an ordinance of the city council of the City of American Canyon, state of California, amending Title III California, amending Title III of the City of of American Canyon Municipal Code to remove Chapter 3 dot 1 to purchasing system.
I'll still second.
Okay, motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abadamas, Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Just for the record, I'm pretty sure you you meant you're going to waive the first reading and read by title only to adopt that ordinance, so we don't have to.
I just read what was in front of me, yeah. Can I adopt a resolution now?
Yep.
You're going to make a motion? I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2023, a resolution of the City Council of the City of American Canyon, adopting amending purchasing policy and procedures.
I'll second that, too.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abadamas.
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes. Thank you, council.
And there's a third and final one.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2023, next in order, a resolution of the City Council of the City of American Canyon adopting Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act Procedures.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abadamas.
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes. Mr. Gomez, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on in our agenda, we are now at business. Item Number 12, General Plan Update. Mr. Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, and members of the public. Brent Cooper, Community Development Director. And tonight, we're presenting a preview of changes to the land use element for the comprehensive general plan update. Just to kind of remind everybody, we have two phases for the general plan. The first phase, which is our our top priority, is to make sure that the current general plan, which was originally adopted in 1994, is updated comprehensively to comply with current state law. We're also, along with that, adopting a program environmental impact report, which will help streamline development throughout the city. There's also attached to that is a vehicle miles travel policy. So this first phase, as we talked about almost a little more than a year ago with the scope of work on the environmental review, it's a little bit stripped down, but it's it's going to ensure that the city's general plan is solid from a legal perspective. On Phase Two, then, we can spend a little more time to dive deep into different, more juicy and interesting issues. That'll be a lot more fun, and we can do that without having the pressure of having a whole general plan that needs to be updated along with it. It's it's kind of like working on your house foundation before you decorate the kitchen. You might also wonder, you know, what else are we doing with the general plan? We've actually been doing a lot with the general plan while we work on the general plan. I have some items here listed that are related to the general plan or its general plan amendments itself. Just, we have already now administrative draft elements for the general plan and the administrative draft environmental impact report. So there's a lot of body of work that's been done just on this subject itself completely. Of course, we all remember the spring, in January, the City Council and the Planning Commission jointly approved the housing element, and it was certified by the state. In May, we did an annual report for the housing element, as well as the overall general plan this spring. We've updated our accessory dwelling unit ordinance, which was an implementation plan from the general plan. We've updated the general plan for Watson Ranch just back in August. A component of our goal for the first phase is adopting a vehicle miles travel policy. That just happened this, earlier this month. And we've also been working very diligently on the Paoli-Watson Lane annexation. And that includes a general plan amendment, pre-zoning, itself has an environmental impact report. That's nearing completion. The environmental impact report went out for public review this spring, and we're just putting the finishing touches on responses to comments, and that's the step before we take it to the Planning Commission, which we're expecting to do in the next meeting in October. And then, we're also participating in the Napa County's update of its Napa County Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. For those that kind of go to a lot of council meetings, you might be here to hear about this arcing ban across the city that limits housing in places where we might want to have housing. And so the, this ban here is related to the the airport's land use compatibility plan, which is being updated. And just from the meetings that I've attended and had some feedback on, it looks like we're going to have some reasonably good news from the county through this process, but it's still ongoing. Has a significant impact particularly for our Phase Two in the general plan, if it all works out. When you have a general plan update, you have to have your study area. I have a graphic here that depicts our study area. This is largely the same as it was in 1994, and the whole area that we're looking at completely reflects the city's water district boundary historically. Of course, water is a very important land use issue, and if you have the water district, then you have a lot of authority over water distribution, because if you don't have water, you don't have a development project. So it's a very important and influential power that the city possesses, well beyond the city limits. Other important lines that factor into the general plan is the urban limit line, which I'll get into later. That's kind of smaller than the district boundary, and we go down in size. Of course, we have our sphere of influence. That's kind of a silly sounding term that's brought to us by the state of California through, and it regulates how the city is able to annex land into their, into our city. And then, just finally, we have the city boundary itself that we all know and love. So we have these various, very important boundaries that all play importantly into the general plan. Getting into kind of more of the meat of what we're here to talk about tonight, we have somewhat of a, I'll say minimalist, change to the land use map. This is back again to ensure that we have consistency with state law. I'll start first by, though, talking about the Hess Laird property as a special area for the urban limit line. This was added by the City Council a little more than a year ago, and we have the general plan update, scope of work for the environmental impact report. Back again to general plan consistency, we have creeks and open space that's designated with non-open space type zoning and general plan designations. There are some existing schools that have commercial and residential zoning. And then also, I mentioned, of course, the Paoli-Watson Project. It's running ahead of the comprehensive general plan, but I think it's important to acknowledge the land use changes that's being brought forward with that. And then finally, there are two vacant school properties that the district has requested the city consider amending them to residential. I have some slides here to kind of go over this a little bit more in detail. I mentioned, of course, the first thing is the urban limit line. You might not know what that means. The urban limit line is is a designation of the city's ultimate boundary to the year 2030. And this was established through several years of negotiations between the city and the county, so back in 2008. So back then, 2030 seemed like a long time from now. But the agreement was ultimately ratified through a citizens initiative and adopted by the council because it was overwhelmingly qualified for the ballot. And the approval of this urban limit line ushered in a year, I would say unprecedented era of cooperation between the city and the county that enabled the city to grow in size by 50%. So it really led to a variety of annexations. Here, there are actually more, but I just named six of them. And at this point, almost all of the urban limit line property has been annexed into the city. So good job to all of us for for getting through that. The Hess Laird urban limit line is in the northeast corner of the city, and you might wonder, what's the importance of having that added to our urban limit line? Well, first of all, it's right on Highway 29 as you enter the city from the north. So it really is part of the gateway to the city. The urban limit line dimension has mostly been annexed, so this might be a logical place in which to grow the city boundary. It's also served by city water and sewer, so the city's already, would provide services to this area and for those utilities. It's adjacent to the Paoli-Watson annexation area, so it's kind of a logical progression. There's also an industrial application in Napa County for this property. And within Napa County, there is a very important policy, as well as with the local agency formation, that urban uses belong in cities and not in counties. And so urban use, served with city sewer and water, right there on the gateway, seems like a natural. Furthermore, it's also part of an alignment for extending Newell Drive all the way up to South Kelly Road, which is a very important council policy to affect the east side connector. So there's a variety of policy issues that seem to make it a natural, kind of almost like a piece of the puzzle. It kind of looks like it needs a little finishing off there on the top for a variety of reasons. There was also recently, you know, a conversation about the Green Island Vineyard. There was an initiative that went to the ballot last November, Measure J. And so back in in June and July, the council was debating whether or not this property should be considered part of the urban limit line. Ultimately, that was left to the voters. It rejected Measure J, and for that reason, staff has not included the Green Island Vineyard as proposed addition to the urban limit line. Kind of back again to general plan land use consistency. I have a bunch of red arrows here. There are creeks and parks throughout the city that have, you know, residential zoning, commercial zoning. So it's kind of cleans it all up. It's, you know, not very interesting, maybe if you're looking into some shattering earth land use issues, but but it helps make everything consistent, which helps give Bill a reason to sleep well at night, so we have consistency within the general plan. I mentioned the Paoli-Watson Lane Project up here, the north part of the city. We proposing to amend the general plan to be consistent with that annexation project that will move forward to the Planning Commission and Council this fall. We have two elementary schools, rather, three elementary schools that have zoning that's commercial, residential, and so this would make it public as it's, because schools are public uses, the schools are staying there, that's the long-term use for the property, the appropriate general plan designations public. So it would just clean that up. And then I mentioned, too, consistent with the 2022 land exchange agreement between the city and the school district, there was a request the city consider re-designating two vacant school site properties for residential use. One is about approximately five acres adjacent to the newly opened Napa Junction Elementary School. Both of these would be for medium density, but this one's medium density. And then the vacant middle school property there next to the high school. The school has decided that they don't wish to build a middle school there and have asked for that site to be designated residential. There is a third site in Watson Ranch that was requested, and that was approved by the City Council in August to designate it from public to park. So that's a change that's already happened. Here's a composite for the general plan land use map as it would, as it would occur. We're still quality controlling it. We're finding little areas here and there that that need to be amended to address recent general plan amendments or just the cartographer didn't get it quite right. So we're making sure that that's correct. To make it simple as well, the Watson Ranch and the Broadway District will be designated as specific plan on the general plan map. And then if you are interested, you can refer to those specific plans for the very fine-grained and land uses that are there. Just kind of a way of being able to make sure that the general plan stays as simple as possible.
Brent, can I butt in for a second?
Of course.
Just go back, flip back one panel there, yeah. So with Watson Ranch, this is the general plan land use map. If we brought up the zoning ordinance, would it, would the Watson Ranch show the medium densities and all the very specific things?
It does. There is actually an overlay of general plan designations in Watson Ranch and also in the Broadway District, but there in the specific plans is a place to keep it. We could add it here, but you'd have this whole specific plan document that has the zoning and and everything else that goes with it. So having it all in one place in a document with a designate, with a denotion here on the land use map, I think is a way of making sure that we don't end up with amendments to the specific plan that fail to make their way to this map, and you start getting inconsistencies. It's kind of a way of making sure that we keep all of the detail in the specific plan, but we we cross-reference it here with the land use map. But you will find exactly what you're looking for there in the specific plan.
All right, thanks. And and then the same applies to the Broadway, the.
That's correct.
Lavender purple.
Yes.
Watch. Okay, thank you.
So kind of kind of wrapping things up here, the next steps is, we really, we have the same team on the general plan that we have working on the Paoli-Watson Project. The Paoli-Watson Project needs to be buttoned up, brought to hearing, and completed, and so that's, we can need to focus on that and get that done. We're also, meanwhile, refining, some of the general plan EIR alternatives need a little bit of work. It's still administrative, so that's the purpose for that. So along with that, just finish up the environmental impact report for the general plan. And then when that's done, we're we're looking at completing that within this calendar year, then proceeding with the 45-day review period for the environmental impact report. The environmental impact report includes all the general plan documents, so you'll be able to see everything there, and begin that early in 2024. EIR has always come with comments, so we'll respond to them, and then the next step after that would be adoption hearings. So that's kind of my quick overview, preview of the of the general plan land use map.
Well, thank you for the presentation. We've accomplished a lot, and more to come. Very good. I'm very optimistic about what we will achieve. Thank you. Councilmember Oro?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would suggest we hit some clarifying comments before we let the public and then go. I just totally forgot my clarifying comment. I will let the public comment until I get my, I had it in my head.
Right. Day's getting long. Any other comments from, or questions from council this time?
No, sir. I'll wait until public comments. You know, I have a few points and observations, but I'll wait for the public.
Council want to take public comment at this time?
Unless Councilmember Oro can come up with his clarifying comment, in which case I would defer to him.
Yeah.
Welcome to the senior moment crowd.
Okay, public comment is open on this now.
Mayor Garcia, we did receive a written comment on this item from Jeanette Goish, and you should have gotten it in your email today.
Oh, yes.
I was just going to add something about the school.
Can't hear you.
I was going to add something.
That's better.
About the school. I was talking to a couple of residents, and they were saying about the Watson Ranch school, that the school board didn't want.
Yes.
And they were going to make a park out of it. And they were with the impression that that should be a school there. And they were saying, I asked them why, and they said, well, they were saying, because the middle school is so full of students, that if they had that school over there, then the middle school could use the Donaldson Way School as part of the middle school. So I was just wondering, kind of, maybe it's a thought that somebody expressed. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Cooper, you got anything to share on that?
No, I was going to make.
I'll just respond and then.
No, please, please.
Well, the school district decides, you know, how they would like to deploy their school resources, and and they've made the decision that they didn't choose. school resources, and they've made the decision that they didn't choose to keep the Watson Ranch site as a school and requested that it be changed to a park. So that's really an issue for the school district to decide, as I understand the issue.
Thank you. Everybody declining, if I could add at this point, declining enrollment in Napa Unified School District, that's all of Napa and us?
See, how it can't decline.
I know.
Where you cut all these new houses, it's going to do it.
It's a concern, but there is other land use out there to be realized. Are you hearing a comment over here? No, okay. Okay.
I just want to make a comment, you know-
Please, next speaker.
I did fill out one of these, but I forgot to give it to the person.
Oh, okay. We'll take that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, sure, thank you.
Is that your name, sir?
My name is Gary Margadant. I live up on, in the Mount Veder area in Napa. I'm not in the city, though. So I'm just a county resident, and I do work on general plans, you know, as a public commentator looking for, you know, the way that cities and counties go forward. And I really do appreciate the fact that you're holding this and you're trying to bring your general plan up to snuff. I would say this, I'm impressed with the use of the word "community sense of place", and I think that's very, very important. And I would, I would say that, you know, in a lot of cases, I think a good look at some of your conservation, you know, for your, the wildlife that is here, is something that I would highly recommend. I know the county has a large portion of their general plan, and this is just the conservation portion of it. This is something that was used recently on deciding what the public would like to do or for a certain property that wanted to put a vineyard in. And they, the county supervisors turned it down on an amendment because they felt that there was a natural beauty there of something that they might want to conserve, and that the public had spoken about that. And I would say this, that, you know, there's other instances where you're going to have problems that I think you should really look at and address. One of them is the sea rise. That's going to affect a lot of the properties that you have for recreation for the public, and that it's going to come and it's going to bother you. It's going to be saltwater, is that going to affect your groundwater? I know this because it's partly in the Groundwater Sustainability Act and what the Napa Board of Supervisors has done about that. So it's something that has to be looked at. And I would say that in some cases, you know, the animals that they're requested to look at hasn't been really thoroughly vetted and has come back to you to decide especially what you're going to do about this sense of place, when you have the red-legged frog and they asked for and said that you should have a report done on this for some of your projects, and the reports were never done. So I, you know, you really don't have anything to go on to manage that sense of place. And I would just say that this, that I would hope that you would look a little closer at the conservation, because this is for your children. This is for the kids that are going to school. This is what, and involve them in this. It's just a great opportunity for them to see nature in your, in your local area. You're going to do this Hess property, but if there's a lot of animals that are moving around in that area, of course, this is a vineyard, but it's not going to be a vineyard very long, but other animals will come into it, but they have sometimes a corridor that the migration corridors. And if that involves crossing Highway 29, well, it's just a death trap for them. And, you know, there are other ways of putting a land bridge over there, could go under the road or above the road. But I would just suggest that I think that something for your future, you know, is a little more prudent to consider these conservation efforts. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Certainly, we are very aware of that, and a lot of our decisions are based on things that you just were speaking about, so thank you for your comment.
Sure, I'm just reiterating, and, you know, whatever you can do like this, I think it's very useful, very useful for the, for the young children in the area to be well aware of that.
Thank you, sir.
I know this is a case about all of the blue line streams that go in the airport area.
Right.
Because that's a warehouse area, but, you know, it should, it should gain that respect.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Anybody else?
Good evening, everybody.
Could you position the mic?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, you can pull that down.
My name is Jeanette Gojich, a longtime resident of American Canyon.
Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you for having us make a public statement about our ideas, I guess. Can you hear me?
Yeah, if you have to speak into the mic, please.
So my concerns are-
You can adjust the height on that.
I lost some height over here.
There you go, that, that does better. Thank you.
So my concerns are environmental mostly. I guess development is important, but it seems to be going at breakneck, breakneck speed. You look one day and you see an apartment building, the next day a hotel, whatever. It's just kind of crazy. It seems like the roadways and the traffic congestion is worsening. It's like, it's almost like we're not keeping up. We have all the buildings, but the roads are a mess, and I don't think that's a secret, is it, to anybody? So, I don't know. I know the development isn't going to stop, but it might slow down a little bit to catch up, and the roads could catch up with that. I know there's talk about doing, what, roundabouts? And I grew up, when I, where I grew up, roundabouts were a thing, and I never thought a good thing. So I'd hate to see them on 29 all the way, you know, I don't know how many are proposed, but I don't feel a good idea. So that, that's one of mine, and also the concern, the other is also, well, air, air quality with all the congestion, traffic and all that, and I don't think that's a secret My concern is also with the wildlife and plants and the waterways, as Gary had mentioned about the rising sea level and all. I'm glad that Measure J didn't pass. I know that's not popular here, but I'm glad it didn't, because I think that was very important to protecting the wetlands from more development. So my other concern regarding development and environmental issues is just keeping the open space as much as we can here, because it really is beautiful here, right? I mean, I've been here a long time, so I've seen it. I like it here. So I hope with your plan, and I have faith that you will, but respectful of the plants, the wildlife, the waterways, judging from what I understand, there's all kinds of little creeks on the east side, and the wildlife, and like Gary was saying, you know, they, if they cross 29, I don't think it's going to happen. I don't think they can just move from another spot. Because this is, so, and as I understand it, there are several endangered species here that reside only in American Canyon. So I'm requesting for more environmental reports, air quality studies, because a lot of commuters come through American Canyon, they don't really stop here, and there's lots of them. I wonder about the air. I mean, tonight it's in horrible shape because of the fires, but I just worry, I guess I worry, because I've been here so long, the lands are being eaten up with development. I guess that's time for me to stop. Leaving less space for the wildlife, and protections need to be instituted, I feel, for the plants, the wildlife, the waterways that are so precious to us all.
Ma'am, you're at time.
Thank you, ma'am. Council want to-
For the good of our-
Continuation?
Animals, plants, and the people, and children. Thank you for listening.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comment. Anybody else wishing to comment?
There are no hands raised online.
Okay. Last opportunity for public comment. Okay, we'll close public comment, and come back to council for further discussion. Good presentation this evening, thank you. Lot of work to win in that, thank you. Appreciate it. Councilmember Oral?
I remember my clarifying question.
Oh, good. Comes back to you.
I wrote it down. What are you asking-
You can call me anytime.
Yeah. What are you asking from us tonight?
This is just a preview, to give you a little taste of some of the more, I think some of the most tangible amendments we'll be doing to the general plan to kind of get you thinking about it, because it's, we'll be bringing it all for you very soon.
So you're not asking for opinions or thoughts or anything like that?
Always interested in opinions, but there's no specific action for the council tonight.
Okay. I have another question here, then, I'll just keep on going. When do you think the time for adoption would be? Is that late 2024?
We're looking at mid-2024 to perfect the EIR and get the comments out. Of course, the response to comments itself can take a long time, but it depends upon what, you know, what we receive. It can vary how long it takes to respond.
And are the committees that were part of this, are they still meeting, Susan?
We aren't meeting with the committees that we started with, although we did do some excellent work with them, and so their, their work is captured into the product that we have.
Yeah. Okay, great. I'd like to take a little bit of time to address some of the public comments, and, you know, particularly in the areas around development. For 10 years, we didn't develop anything here. Between 2012 to just recently, nothing was done because of the effects of the Great Recession, and also, we didn't have any plans placed. I got on council because the city citizens were here asking for more amenities and things to do, and improving an ugly highway, and enjoying, making the town a little bit better. What you're seeing today happening isn't something that happened overnight. What you're seeing here is about two decades' worth of comments and input from citizens over that time period wanting a town center, wanting to improve the highway, wanting to create jobs that are in an industrial base. It just so happens that it is happening all at the same time, because this council actually took action and improved those things that have been decades in the making. And that's what's happening today, so it seems like a lot. And so, if you look at it, we are improving our highway. Every improvement that comes on that highway is undergrounding utility lines. We're adding new businesses. We are getting a town center in Watson Ranch, plus providing much-needed housing for the citizens of California. There's new people moving in there now that weren't able to buy, but they wanted to live here. It's choices. We have jobs. IKEA is here, PG&E is here, the wine warehouses are here. These are all jobs within the community that we, which we can do. Listen, I hear you. I've been accused of being actually pro-development and all that, and I am, to a point. And I've said this before, that we need to work on that Broadway corridor, make that a lot prettier and friendlier, we need to finish that town center, and we need to complete the industrial base. When all that's done, you can come back to me and say, are we done yet? And I'll probably say yes. It becomes infill. In the meantime, we can walk and chew gum at the same time. Let us not forget what American Canyon is delivering to the rest of this county and understanding where the environment and conservation plays. We have 843 acres of the Newell Preserve, connected to the Newell Lynch Canyon. We enjoy that. There's a protected red-legged frog area right up there that nobody's touching. We can't even bring our mountain bikes down there because it's protected. We have the wetlands and the river here. We were the first in the county to ban gas sta, new gas stations in town. We are raising funds for the Napa River Ecology Center. I get it. I understand, but there is a balance here, and what I've told people from all along, because we are such a new city, we get to build the city that we want. We didn't have things outside of Rancho Del Mar and Fran before, and then we had to build in services for ourselves. The Safeway was one, Mark Joseph was on a lot of that, and we're adding to this city to make it, to make it better for our citizens here, so that they can stay here, play here, and work here. And so, as you, as, we could take that criticism, we can hear that, but I want everyone to remember that we're doing our part to try to make that balance of conservation and development. Thanks.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes. Well, I want to add on to that a little bit, and I think Councilmember Oral pointed out, we do have the open space, the Newell Open Space on the east side, we've got the wetlands on the, on the west side, and that creates very large areas. As it relates to sea level rise, just a quick plug, if you're interested, on October 7th, Saturday, at Wetlands Edge, between 10:00 and 2:00, there'll be an information booth from the BCDC Bay Conservation and Development Commission. There's a committee working on sea level rise, of which I'm a, one of the elected reps on it, and they will have an information booth out there, along with the American Canyon Art Foundation's Pumpkin Path and other exciting stuff. So make it a point to be at Wetlands on Saturday, the 7th of October. But beyond just that, bear in mind with Measure J, that election, it has kind of created a de facto 150 acres of presumably open space. So that is an area that's just been added to the preserve because it can't be developed for any urban uses, so it's either going to be a vineyard or it's going to be open space. So, you know, to some extent, we've, we're adding to that open space and looking into the sea level rise. Beyond those comments, I'd like to throw up my own suggestions for the general plan. It's either Phase 1 or Phase 2, I'll defer to staff on that. There was a vision statement in the original general plan, and I think when we look to update it, we ought to consider our mission, vision, values, and actual seven or eight goals that we adopted 10 years ago and kind of ratified just in our last retreat, and somehow integrate that into the vision statement and hopefully integrate it into the general plan itself. Because I think it, it will help kind of synthesize where our heads at, since they're values that have been around for 10 years and they seem to be valid. So consider that in your wordsmithing. Secondly, on the urban limit line, I certainly think adding the Hess Laird parcel makes some sense for the reasons staff pointed out. But I would also point out, if you look there, there's a funny little white spot. I think it's just south of Pick 'n Pull. And when we're considering a new urban limit line, please include that, because I'm not sure what the history was, but back in 2007 or '08, the county wanted that parcel in the county, and it, it just is a county island, if, so-
Could add that, I think the property owner preferred to stay in the county.
That may be true, and I'm not so sure the property owner is still around. So I would like to suggest that we just put that puppy in there before you're done. I'd also like to bring back either the circulation element or just a comment, that the circulation element ought to talk about the parallel road strategy that we've embraced, the idea that, you know, you've got 29, and we're not going to be able to expand it because Caltrans doesn't want to, but we certainly have the Newell Extension on the east side, we have the west side connector, and so if we have some discussion about that as a rationale so that the residents can understand there's a, there's a game plan here. And consistent with that game plan is the Newell Extension itself. And it would be helpful if the general plan, or in some fashion, we articulated the complexity of making that happen. It's real easy to tell people, you got to build Newell Extension, and everybody embraces it, but we don't go to the detail of saying, but you got to get- It's real easy to tell people, you got to build Newell Extension, and everybody embraces it. But we don't go to the detail of saying, but you got to get Pale Loop Annex, and you got to get the Public Utilities Commission to sign off on a railroad crossing, and then you got to get, you know, and on and on and on. So if the circulation element could kind of clarify some of the complexities with that project, so that people understand it isn't going to happen overnight, and to understand the things we've got to get done to get them done. Now, the last thing is on some of the land use provisions. Yes, the school district would like to convert five acres by Napa Junction and 17 acres by the high school to residential. And I'm not entirely opposed to that, but there's one, there's an issue of timing. First, you know, obviously, our community is getting a little frustrated at all the development. And I am sympathetic to the argument that if we've built all the houses we're supposed to build in this cycle, why should we be adding more? And I think that's the point I would want to emphasize. We have a RENA process, a Regional Housing Needs Assessment, a process that we actually got a, you know, we've met our numbers. We've got a certified housing element. So for me, I would not be in favor of rezoning those two parcels at this time, because frankly, we should wait and see. During the next cycle, depending upon whatever the state imposes on us, we may have to revisit it. But I think if we rezone them now, we would be doing ourselves a disservice, because if they get developed between now and the next cycle, it's my understanding we don't get to take credit for that. And then down the road, we will be in a pickle trying to meet the housing requirement. So for me, I would leave them as is. Because amongst other things, it might also facilitate some things about, you know, interacting with Watson Ranch. Maybe, maybe we could, you know, facilitate securing a site for an elementary school if somewhere down the road, the school district might have different staff or different trustees and might reimagine that issue. And so it may be in our best interest to leave things as is for now. So my long-winded response, but those are my comments.
Thank you both, Councilmember Joseph and Councilmember Aurora, for your comments. That's a lot to think about. Any other comments from council?
No, sir.
I just want to echo what Councilmember Mark Joseph just said regarding the school sites. I don't think we should be rezoning them to residential at this time for many of the reasons that he cited. But I think Fran alluded to, somebody was saying, I don't even remember who it was, if you build it, they will come up the school. So I'm still optimistic.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate the comments so far. I think the, regarding schools, so picking up on where the school district is on these issues. Demographics, there's a, two factors that are happening. Aging out, so families with the younger kids who bought a house here because of school, those kids are getting older, so they're moving through the system. There's less kids coming in. Part of that is family composition in terms of a younger population, having children in that age group. So there's a generational aspect to family size or having a family, even. Cost of housing, and I think I've mentioned it before. I bought a house in, near Fuller Park, across the street from Sheriff's School in Napa in 19, I think it was either '77 or '78. It was built in 1939. It would be generous to say if it was 1,200 square feet. I bought it for $60,000. October before last, it sold for $900,000. Who's moving in? I asked my son. He lives a block away now. Well, it's COVID, and everyone can work from home. So what you pay for, as they're a techie, you're doing office work in San Francisco, for what you're paying for the studio apartment in San Francisco, you can purchase a house in Napa. So the housing crisis is driving families away from that area. Hence, there's less population coming into the school district. What we're building is going to attract more families. It has, don't know what family size is going to represent going forward. So there's a serious drop in population. Look at the Help Wanted ads going out there for all kinds of service-level work, and they can't find employees. Well, it's not because they don't want to work, as some people think, because they're getting a check from the state. Well, they're not getting that anymore. Haven't for a while. It's a population issue. Don't know how large the moving out of states who saw my desire to have a house in my family is going. Just talked with somebody the other day, longtime resident, looking at San Antonio, Texas. Okay, I hear a lot of that, people moving to Texas. Don't know how big that number is. So that's the issue on the school site. For me, I've spoken before about, you know, the need to preserve site for schools. School district has a philosophy, larger schools. They have closed several smaller schools in the Napa Unified School District, trying to consolidate operational costs for them by having a larger school. We'll report on it later, but two of us, Vice Mayor Washington and I, were, the 25th anniversary for the middle school in American Canyon. That's designed for 1,000 students. I do a coffee monthly with the principal, just to make sure the city-school relationship is working. I talk about things like safety outside of school boundaries, traffic control, et cetera. This kid seems real happy there. You know, he's got a lot of activities for him. The redesigned interior space certainly lends itself to handling a larger population. So it's something of us to consider along those lines. I think ultimately, the test is what the quality of life is for kids on campus. I usually get a report back on that, what's going on. And academic performance. The goal in school is to learn so you can achieve further academically. So that captures that one. On the comments regarding the open space, thank you for your perspective. Newell is 800 and some odd? 600 and some odd, yeah. Wetlands Edge is over 400 acres for a population of, what, 24,000? Let's just round it off. That's a lot of open space. And we cherish that. Those are treasures. See, when you can get out to the wetlands, that's no longer the wetlands. That's my wetlands. That's our community wetlands. That belongs to us, because we can get out there, recreate. Being on a ex-official member of the Community Parks Foundation Board, I can't vote, but I can participate. The mobile classroom, the trailer they're having behind the truck, there's several events they've done there. It's education for the kids. They bring out all the pictures of the birds. Which one can you identify? Right. They have a story walk now. Mariposa, that's about the monarch butterfly that you see here. Now they begin to learn, as you follow the whole course of it. Now, it winters in Michoacan, Mexico, up in the mountains. So there's that international connection between us. So they, it's provided an opportunity. And the board has, working with the school district to get more opportunity for that. They get a lot of outreach coming to them. Oh, bring it by our school. Bring it by our school. We have a lot of opportunity for that. So there's a lot of sensitivity around that. Sea level rise is real. Trying to establish the location for the Community Parks Foundation at the old corporate yard is their goal. Great opportunity for it, right on the wetlands. Nobody's got anything like this. I think I've reported back to the council. I serve also on the North Bay Watershed Association. That's Marin, Sonoma, Napa, and Solano Counties all have reps on that. And they do discuss things like the wetlands and the water supply issues. But, you know, there, we've done tours of that. As far as I know, this is the only one in all the North Bay that will have that opportunity. So we'll have visitors coming into town. We'll certainly open that up to anybody who wants to come down, learn some things about the wetlands. Here's the value of it. This is a unique aspect of American Canyon. It's an absolute treasure. And we are very protective of that. And ours is, you know, we have to be environmentally sensitive to the wildlife that's there, yes. But it's also needs public access in the appropriate places. And when you have that, that education, that value for what's going on with the wildlife becomes more internalized in people. Oh, yeah. These are birds that come here. A really cool one was, there's a pair of swans on the north end of the Loop Trail through the wetlands. This is, you know, I can't remember. There's near the, there's a couple of ponds there. Went by there with the Audubon group coming by and said, hey, look, there's a pair nesting swans right there. I mean, you know, it's like from here to the podium. This is really cool. You know, and they got baby birds. Wow. And learning about them, they mate for a lifetime. They're always together. So, you know, we have plenty of opportunities to educate people about that. And certainly, safety issues for wildlife is important. But, you know, look at what we have that we share and value. Value very highly in American Canyon, in those areas. Water supply, I don't know, Mr. Holly, anybody, do we have groundwater access here? I think all our water comes from North Bay Aqueduct. And there's no, nothing that I've ever heard from anything about overdrafting water in American Canyon on that. But it's a concern, because saltwater intrusion is a reality in a lot of places on the bay. So we're trying to do our part to that, and it's a vision for the community. I would ask those who spoke, you know, be involved in American Canyon, in those areas. Come on down. Everyone's welcome to participate in that, because it's informational, it's educational, and it assures our value. The new housing we're building are all meeting the new requirements. Solar installed on the roof. From a city perspective, no lawns in the front yard. You can have about 25% of your backyard. You know? The recycled water? Thank you. There's a reminder for me. We just completed getting recycled water to Community Park 2 and Community Park 1. Now they're off potable water. We have two apartment houses complexes built here. They're on recycled water. All the toilets are on recycled water. Village at Vinnie's Ranch and Canyon Ridge. And to my knowledge, that's the first and only so far in Napa County. And the discussion between more municipalities are being, well, how do we reuse recycled water? How do we get that to a standard that is now potable and can be done? Because it is all the time. So those are things that we're tuned in on it. I appreciate the feedback and the input from those who came to speak tonight. And there's good things. We just, we keep working on it together. I think your suggestions are very important. And I'd just like to comment on how we're addressing those concerns. But please stay tuned. Thank you. We'll reopen public comment? I think we have to reopen. I hear no objection to it. Please go ahead, Fran.
I was wondering there, and it says the vacant Napa Junction Elementary property. It's residential instead of commercial? Explain that.
The Napa Junction Elementary School was built on property that has dinner plan and zoning for commercial recreation.
Commercial recreation?
That's right.
Not commercial or recreation?
Right. It's a commercial recreation. It's kind of a pair.
Okay. And I understand it now. The other question I have is, every day I drive by the lot next door. What is that designated as?
You referring to the one next door to City Hall?
Right.
That one has a business park zoning from the Broadway Plan.
Okay.
It allows for a very wide range of different uses.
I would like to see the city do something about that lot. It's a nice lot. It would make a nice little park or something, because it's ugly. I'm sorry to say that. I mean, it's really not very pretty to drive by there and see.
Beauty is in the eye of the beholder.
Well, I guess. Anyway, that's just my comment.
Thank you, Fran. Thank you. All right. We'll close public comment again. All right. So this is more of an update?
It is.
And, Councilmember Joseph?
Well, before we end this discussion, it seems like everything that staff has identified, we're probably all comfortable with, because some of it we direct staff to do. And some of the comments I made certainly can be integrated down the road. So the one area is that I think we're going to have to provide some direction on is the two school sites. Right now, the default is to make them residential. And I'm not so sure there's a commitment on this council, or at least we need to clarify, whether or not those need to stay as they are, or whether we let them move along the path of becoming converted to residential.
Mike was off the whole time, so I apologize for those who probably figured I didn't say anything that special. So the real quick one is, should we take some action on the two school sites? Do we want them to be rezoned, or do we want to leave them as is?
You know, I'm in favor of having that as a, I believe the word is special study area, but I don't know if that's a direction that we're looking for tonight, or even if we can do that.
Yeah, I'll say right now, and our commitment in that exchange agreement, was that the staff version of the draft document would come with those properties rezoned, but the council retains its authority to tell staff what it wants to do differently. So Councilmember Joseph is correct. Absent some other direction from council, what you see here is what you would then see in the draft EIR, what you would bring ultimately be asked to certify next year. So there are other possibilities. Special study was mentioned. The zoning could be left as is, as commercial rec and public. So there are a variety of other possibilities. What we committed to do is from the staff side, is to bring forward a residential designation. And that would be, if the council wants something other than that, we would need to know that now, lest us push off finishing the EIR and everything else.
I can't help but think that the population will continue to grow in American Canyon, given the space that we're looking at for future annexation, development, et cetera. And we're going to need a school site. And we may in fact need another middle school site. One elementary, one school. How we get around doing that is a conversation that we need to have. Because we can take what we identified as a park right now and make that for housing, and then there's space that has not been developed in Watson Ranch yet, that we can now designate that as a school site. The middle school property, I think, was next to the high school baseball field there. It's all about populations and age groups and people moving in. And it's not just limited to American Canyon. Redwood Credit Union has a main corporate office there at the airport. They've told us several times with the Chamber of Commerce, they estimate probably 700 employees there. Well, great news for us. How's an eight-minute commute sound to you if you buy a house in Watson Ranch, you know? All right. Are there going to be families with kids? Most workforce is still in that age group. So things to consider with that.
Yeah, something to keep in mind is absolutely the population of the Napa Unified School District is going down. And there's quite a disparity in the trajectory between the American Canyon population and the Napa population.
Yes.
And so it is absolutely going down overall. Ours is not going down. Ours is kind of plateaued. Theirs is going down quite significantly.
I believe the last time I heard, 1,400 students left.
And the other aspect of this, and you touched on it earlier, Mayor, was the school district has now effectively opted a practice where they're only going to be operating large schools. Small schools are verboten. So those two things have, are sort of pulled together. And this notion of land banking or whatnot are very valid topics. The thing I would point out is what's happening at the state level, particularly with residentially zoned properties. It's not too far to imagine the state legislature almost saying housing is by right. If you've got a residentially zoned property, you can do whatever. You don't even need a building permit. I mean, I'm being a little facetious, but the state is pretty advanced in what they're allowing by right. So having a residential zoning might mean this never comes back to council, meaning there would be a subdivision. SB 330 and others with a certain amount of affordability might go to a planning commission hearing, or might just be approved by right if you had enough certain requirements met. So I think that's one of the aspects to bring forward, is to say residential zoning is meant to be very, very permissive from the legislature right now, even for communities like us who meet all of our RENA requirements. We're not given any exemptions to those in a lot of cases. We're being told to approve more. So something to just think about in those pieces. The disparity between the population projections and the different communities and who's growing and not growing and things like that, really, I think, paints itself in a situation that further study is needed, right? And I think, I don't know about how the school district will be looking at things in the future, and how they're going to be looking at one community with the declining population and one with the flat or potentially slightly increasing. We're building now on the absorption of the homes in Watson Ranch, for example, and other places. places is much more on kind of a simmer, kind of a, call it a friendly simmer of student populations. It's not a behemoth increase in student populations. We're roughly replacing the amount of students that we leave each year through graduations and whatnot. So, it's kind of a replacement simmer, if you will. There is capacity, we know, at the high school, for example. There's a number of out-of-district transfers that come in, so there's an automatic capacity there. We know the new Napa Junction Elementary has capacity, for example. So, I think the district has planned for those different aspects of it. But facility planning and being able to adjust to variations in student populations is different than land banking because it's kind of, as I was saying, they're not making any more of it once things are built on raw land. They're generally built and they don't go away. So, definitely some different aspects there. But I wanted to point out the significance of residential zoning because what the state does in overlaying those requirements, something like this might come back as a planning commission item, and that's it.
This housing cycle from the state goes on for how many more years?
That's a good question, Brent.
It goes on for eight years, but the state is constantly coming up with new regulations to restrict local control over housing approvals.
We're in what year? We're in the first year of an eight-year?
Well, there are numerous laws to foster housing from the state every year.
Oh, okay.
So, rules are constantly changing and in the direction the city manager is describing towards less and less authority for the city to limit housing based upon zoning or standards of a variety of kind.
Mr. Mayor, trying to follow up to bring closure to this, I don't necessarily have a problem with rezoning it to special study because I think that's essentially what we're looking at. And the middle school site, I guess, is zoned public now, so you don't really have a development right. But the parcel on the other side is currently commercial recreation. So, I'm wondering what would be the consequence if we rezoned it from commercial recreation to special studies? Because I'm understanding special studies, you can't really develop that. That's kind of like a holding pattern designation or?
Well, it's a practice that we're familiar with in our past history.
Right.
Vintage Ranch, another master plan in Watson Ranch, for example, were all special studies originally. So, it's a way of designating something that requires further study, that requires a special effort to look at. It doesn't necessarily give any immediate right, but it also says, you know, something is going to be studied, so.
Right. So, that's, and again, I think the middle school site, if it's public now, you can't do much except build, say, a school. And if you made it special studies, that seems like an okay thing. But the five-acre remnant parcel on the west side, since it's zoned commercial recreation, is there anything that our city attorney would have hesitation about to rezoning that? And sorry to put you on the spot.
I think you... Okay. I think, you know, one aspect of this examination now is, you know, and of course, there's all kinds of linkage in the general plan law. But one that's been critical in recent general plan litigation, set aside from housing, is the, I'm going to call it recognized correlation, and that's the word in the general plan law, between land use and circulation. Having said that, you know, look, you have the input on land use designations. Do I have a problem with it? I don't have a problem with it because it's a direction that you're giving. I would just suggest that there are other aspects of the general plan law, and I think Jason mentioned one of them, is what I'm going to call the directory guidance from HCD, which is still up in the air, right? Do you actually need that confirmation to go forward with land use planning? Or is just the advice from HCD all that's needed? Keeping in mind that everything has to be horizontally consistent, internally consistent. So, I'm going to, that's how I would say. There are these overarching constraints on land use planning in a general plan. And, you know, Brent's done an incredible job to keep this thing going on the update, given what was on the ground. Like Councilmember Oro said, what's here is a product of an awful lot of planning and an awful lot of implementation. You know, I find the critical year to be 2008. So, the answer to your question's not simple, but you're the ones that make the recommendation. I would only keep in mind the integrated nature of a general plan. That's...
So, that...
I just want to ask one question.
Okay. I'm curious on the sense of urgency to change the zoning in either one of these two areas. I mean, who's it benefiting? Is it ben... Oh, you can't hear me?
Yeah.
Oh. What's the sense of urgency in changing the zoning in these two areas? I mean, is it urgent to us to change it? Is it urgent for the school district to have it changed? Because it seemed like we spent a lot of time talking about these two places to change the zoning. And I think all the work that you provided today to tell us all the things that we are doing seems to be going in the right direction. Changing zoning for these two areas, seeing like we're just spinning our wheels. I don't see the sense of urgency in it.
May I comment?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, it's not urgent. That's the problem. But it will be, it has a potential to be urgent. Meaning, we're, our views of how school services should be provided is different from how the district provides. They've taken away a school. They've taken away a middle school. We believe as a city, and I think an entire city, actually, not just as a council, believe that these schools will expand, will get to capacity. Maybe not the high school, but definitely the middle school. Because middle school's already at a poor site. It's less than 10 acres. There is land that sits out there, particularly over by the high school, that is optimal for a new school.
Yes, it is. But it's zoned for a new school, for a school today, is what I'm saying. So, we're talking about changing the zoning.
No, they're looking at it as residential. And so, what, basically, this whole conversation makes me want to move to move it to a special study area because we need to study it and have this conversation a little bit more. And that's the reason why, right? And so, as we think about a decision in the general plan that is going to sit for the next 20 years, or in our case, 30 years, we can't make that decision now. We probably shouldn't be making that decision now. So, let's put it in a special study area. It doesn't prevent housing from being built there. It doesn't prevent a school from being there. It just gives us an opportunity to have a special study for it. Same for that Hess property, right? It is zoned special study. It used to, you know, it used to grow grapes there. We want to put a road there. Maybe. They want to put industrial there, maybe. Let us study that, and let's direct staff to do that so that these two important pieces of property can be studied, I guess, more thoughtfully and thoroughly.
Yeah, looking at future needs and impact, yeah. Future needs and impact, yeah.
Okay. So, let me drill down a little more. I don't object to rezoning them to special studies or leaving them as is, but what I'm being is hypothetical, saying if I own that five-acre parcel that was zoned commercial recreation, and yeah, maybe I was hoping to make it residential and sell it for homes. But I could hypothetically reach out to somebody who's a big fanatic about golf disc and say, hey, I've got a little parcel here that I want to, you know, make some money off of, and you can set up your commercial disc thing and have a great time. If we turn it into special studies, I can't sell that property for that. So, I'm concerned, I guess, about rezoning something that has development potential, whether it's residential or otherwise, and we're turning it into special studies so that it doesn't have any development potential. Do we run into any legal risks from doing that?
No, there's no legal risk. The bottom line is the council has the discretion to rezone properties, and the general plan process is the place to do that, and assuming that we study those in the EIR, it's all appropriate. Brent, one of the things I was thinking about, I think Councilmember Joseph is sort of cogitating, what are the kinds of things that might be allowed under the commercial rec zoning right now? We know it's a kind of unique mashup of those five acres, and it's got its own site constraints, approximately to a school being one of them, and wetland features towards the south. What are the kinds of things that might be allowed today? And what kind of process is even allowed for those things?
Well, paintball jungle, for example, is a commercial recreational use. It needs a conditional use permit. So, many of those commercial uses would require a conditional use permit in that zoning district. Rather than perhaps just to offer another option, given that those properties today have zoning and along with that come property rights, I think was what Councilmember Joseph is referring to, perhaps there could be a special note, and much like when we're talking more about elaborating on circulation improvements and tasks and things that are needed to lead to reasonable decisions, perhaps there could be policies in the general plan that refer to specifically taking the attention to discuss with the school district the future of these properties for mutual agreement and benefit, as opposed to changing the land uses themselves today to affect the same outcome.
So, that idea, to maybe paraphrase you, Brent, would be leave the zoning of those properties as they exist today, but to have a general plan policy that acknowledges the future prospects of those and future desires of those two unique properties based on their somewhat unique ownership?
Right.
And a general plan policy would say, go talk to the school district. What do you want to do to those properties and so forth?
I would like to see the attorney's perspective on that.
Ross? Go ahead.
Okay. The one thing I'd say is, we're talking about the general plan now. And again, you know, it's a complicated matrix, but the general plan's at the top, right? Everything has to be consistent with the general plan. Aye, yes, or no? And once you paint the colors, whatever you decide they're going to be, you then have a mandatory duty to implement zoning that's consistent with the general plan designations. I think Brent raised an excellent idea is that, you know, increasingly, the goals and policies or the text of the general plan are really the important things that guide development. Because, you know, instead of just saying, you know, well, we want to facilitate commercial development, you have a goal and policy that says we want to facilitate commercial development that integrates with existing land uses and complements the agricultural-generated businesses within the greater area, right? So, you have a linkage with this color designation on the general plan that zoning then has to come in and be consistent with. So, the more you say in a general plan about what you want in terms of land uses, the better that is for the type of zoning. But zoning in general plan comes first, right? So, you know, I think about that is, and has the science changed in 10 years and 20 years? Absolutely. And, you know, the draft document that staff's been formulating has this integration of goals and policies in these required elements. So, I think, keep in mind the pyramid about consistency here and that zoning is a product of these general plan goals and policies. So, you know, it's something down the way a little bit. But if you want to frame the fence lines, term I like, that's in your general plan goals and policies.
So, despite all that, I'm inclined to prefer to leave the current land uses as they are, but perhaps include some text that clarifies that, in effect, there are areas that we want to revisit and maybe work with the property owner or whatever. I just have this uncomfortable feeling that if we rezone the commercial recreation, even though I don't think that's what the property owner really wants to do with it, I think it may be giving some ammunition, you know, that might not be in our best interest. So, leaving it as is with an understanding that we want to look at it, you know, and if it's residential, there's a timing element consistent with the state's housing requirements and so on. That's all been discussed. I guess the bottom line is, I don't want to see either parcel turn into residential at this point in time, and the current designations wouldn't allow that. So, for me, the objective is met by leaving them alone.
And the middle school is a school site, a public...
Is public, yeah.
Right. Just to leave them the way they are right now. I think that's what we're getting to.
All right.
And if we leave them the way they are, they can petition in the future to change it around. Is that my understanding?
Yeah. Any property owner under a single application could, it's literally an application for a general plan amendment. We've done them frequently. So, the property owner always has the ability to do that.
All right.
I'm in agreement with Councilmember Joseph's position, yeah.
Straw poll, work on this thing. People want to leave it the way it is?
Yes.
The way it is?
Yeah.
Councilmember Abadamas?
Mayor?
Do we need to take a formal...
Yeah, I was going to, I was just confirming with our clerk offline here, a suggestion procedurally. The council can adopt a minute order that would memorialize, you know, this direction to staff. And I think that would be helpful and appropriate. So, being, you know, again, what staff did was bring forward what was consistent with this prior agreement. Council has asked for a change. So, you know, I'm going to kind of summarize what I heard from a change, and then whoever wants to make that motion can either agree with me or...
I'll make a motion that we leave those two parcels as they're currently designated, but include some text that indicates recognition that they may need be subject to further review and study.
I'll second that. Motion second. Roll call, please.
Sorry, I'm just getting it all down. Councilmember Abadamas?
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes, and thank you for your motion. I think that captures what we were discussing. Very good. All right. Moving on to our agenda. Maintenance and Utilities Department Water Operations Update. Very good.
Mayor and council, there was a presentation included in your packet, and we have Dominic Patrick, our Water Systems Manager, here, ready to present that to you. I did want to do a bit of a time check and see how the council is feeling about going through the whole presentation or answering questions. If he's ready and we can go, but wanted to make sure we had a time check with the council.
Thank you. How are you feeling?
I'm good.
Everybody good?
We till 10 o'clock typically, so...
Do it at 1.5 speed.
Thank you, Dominic.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Holly. Please proceed.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor. Maintenance and Utilities Department Update, Water Division. The city of American Canyon this year, January through July, our water supply was at roughly 1,500 acre feet. This is consistent with last year. We're about projecting 2,500 acre feet. Earlier this calendar year, the state gave us an 85% allocation. More recently, they gave us a 100% allocation, so we have our full 5,200 acre feet. Due to the heavy rain event, it was a high snow pack. It's the first times in 13 years roughly that we've had a 100% allocation. For our potable water demands, we are consistent with last year. We're roughly 11.8% potable water reduction. It's due to the climate, but also I think some of our conservation is still being practiced amongst our city. Water operations, we had our potable water storage tanks cleaned and inspected. This included our water treatment plant tank, our clear well at the treatment plant, our Oat Hill Number One tank, and our Oat Hill Number Two tank. Roughly 4.7 million gallon... Roughly 4.7 million gallons of storage. We also, for compliance, we do a combined filter NTU every 15-minute data report to the state. We added our individual filter monitoring. That also helps us and the regulator have insight on our combined. For our water operation stats, we've responded to over 1,100 service calls, identified and repaired 128 water meter leaks. We replaced 36 water meters. We replaced 33 service line connections. And then we also repaired four water mains year-to-date. Through the state and EPA level, we have reported our annual water supply and demand assessments and then also due before July, we got our consumer confidence report, also known as the annual water quality report on the city website. This is a water, this is a water slide, but it's just as much as a finance slide. So together, the Water Division and Finance Department worked together, starting this low-income household water assistance program. Juan Gomez and his team now take the task and we started the program back in the summer of 2022 and customers have received almost $50,000 in this low-income housing program. Staff accomplishments, we filled two water distribution maintenance worker staff and then also a water treatment plant mechanic. So we have a fully staff of 11 on our team. That's it for my presentation. I'll take any questions.
Very good, thank you. Questions from council?
Just amazed that our water usage is still actually trending below last year. I mean...
Yeah. How much of that was due to heavy rain? Because we didn't start watering as, we started watering much later in the season than we usually did with the garden.
I think the safe answer and somewhat honest answer is part of it is the cooler weather and having a wetter winter and then probably 5%, half of it roughly, is actually from implementing those cash for grass, the turf going away and people are still utilizing recycled water. We still are utilizing the recycled water fill stations. I don't have those numbers on the top of my head. I know Pam Phillips may be able to help provide some of that information, but I do know that we're consistently using those fill stations and consistently maintaining and repairing them as well.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
Yeah. The city manager often talks about water usage from probably a decade ago and how we've lowered it over the past decade. I think a chart like that would be very helpful here if we can have that because, again, tonight we had a big discussion on conservation concerns, right? And that, you know, development, you can't conserve at the same time with development. But we had that chart showcasing that while we're growing, we're reducing our water usage. I think that's a very powerful slide.
Okay, yes. I think we're conservation and development, kind of to tackle that is when we develop, we also can make repairs and we could also upgrade water pipelines and abandon the old ones. So that's going to help you with water loss right there. And that's a big, because council and the city's made improvements, we've seen the improvements in the water loss level as well as water conservation and outreach. So it's kind of a full circle.
How much of the, we've got the full allocation from the state. Did we get to bank any of that we didn't use?
Jason, can you?
How's that work?
Yeah, kind of, if you remember the old adage of rollover minutes, nobody has rollover minutes on their cell phone anymore. But back in the day, you used to have rollover minutes on your cell phone and the table A allocations kind of works like that. There's a cap, though. There's a limit to it. We're not going to be able to carry over all of it. We're limited, there's a formula. We're limited on how much we can carry over. I don't know the exact number. Maybe half of that is kind of my rough guess. There's a complicated math that I don't remember, but about half of it would be my hunch. I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, it's a great number for us and I think your point, Councilmember Oro, about a slide that shows where we were a decade ago would be, it wouldn't fit on the graph, I can tell you that we're not going to change the graph, but...
Put it on the webpage, so everybody knows.
We could find something, okay? And I think it also, it takes more than just consideration of just one reservoir, Orville Reservoir. It's taking consider of San Luis, San Luis Reservoir as well. So the state looks at it from a whole state water project, which is 2/3 of California. So it's not just, snowpack's good Sierra, so North Bay, you're good to go. There's a lot of puzzle pieces to put together before we could bank into the following year or the next year, excuse me.
We're still doing retrofits, low-flow toilets?
Yeah, oh yeah, so, yeah.
Oh, that's still going? Okay, good.
Yep, you can still get, work with our environmental compliance and you can exchange your toilets. And again, the cash for grass and then the recycled water fill stations.
All right.
So next month, we'll be doing the Citizens Academy and I know that the utilities and Public Works will be working really hard with doing that outreach and restating and getting that out there to the public, so excited for next month.
The more we can inform people about what the opportunities are out there, the better, yeah. Thank you. Anything else from council?
Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
We have a couple of other quick updates. Mayor, Eric has got an update on some new temporary residents that we have in town and Rick's got a reminder about an event tomorrow. I know Ally's got some events she wants to talk about as well.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, community. Erica Alman Smith is Public Works Director with a team effort with Ali Akada, Director Ali Akada for Parks and Recreation. We have sheep in the city limits grazing at Veterans Park. We're trying this out. We didn't want to publicize it too much, but it's out there. There's already posts on social media, not from the city, but from what's happening and probably other venues, but we're trying this out as far as for stream maintenance and some of our open space, trying to see if we can expand it otherwise. We have a herder on site. It's actually the spouse of the company, Pat Napa Pasta Protein. And they're local, they're Napa County. And so we're giving it a try. It allows, enables us to do some work within our stream setbacks that we aren't normally able to get in there without red tape as far as our regulatory permits. So we're not trying to denude the property, just try to bring it down to a nice fine cut and then they'll be out there probably for just about a week to 10 days, if not less, depending on how quickly they eat.
Is that the same basic thing that at the old landfill where they have flocks of sheep just more or less, okay, well, that's great, that's great.
And I did ask, so Cory Pridmore Carlson is the proprietor, if you know the family name, Pridmore. I think she's fifth generation Napa. But they are not the ones that are at the landfill, I already asked, but I asked, is that, are they competition? So at this point, they're no longer a competition. We call each other to find out who's available. So we were fortunate that she was very responsive for requests for proposals. I believe Director Akada asked for a couple others. We didn't get a response and they were reason and saved us the price of permits if we were to do it by hand and manual labor, so it's very exciting to try this out.
Yeah, I already got text messages on that, photos of stuff of those sheep there and I didn't know, so. I can confirm that the operator for the waste management area is different. There was an article recently in the Sacramento Bee about them.
Chaos, chaos, chaos. And then there's, not, that sounds, I just realized, saying that out loud, that sounds like, and I think there's wooly weed eaters. I think there's another one out of Contra Costa County, so.
They're very effective. Goats, unlike cattle, have upper and lower teeth. Cows only have a lower, so they eat like that. But the goats, friends up in Oregon went to visit, they had wanted to put in, but nearly about this size, it was a blackberry patch. Couldn't get rid of the blackberries. They finished to put goats in there. No more blackberries. Now they eat anything, so it's been a very effective. I know when I lived in Southern California, they had implemented a lot of this for the fire breaks in the heavy brush areas, you know, around the Los Angeles basin. Wow, yeah, they cleaned it up good. It's just, you know, I think one thing that's a wrinkle is there was some legislation moving forward in Sacramento to pay the goat herders overtime.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's kind of makes that, for some areas, too expensive. So I don't know. But I think going out there mowing it all down by hand, that's feed the animals, yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Good work.
Evening, Mayor and Council and members of the community. I just have a quick, more plug-in for Coffee with the Cops tomorrow. So if you all had a late night and you need a little extra caffeine, come on down to Starbucks right across the way on Main Street from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. and I'll be there along with several other ACPD officers and we just want to invite everybody to come on down and have a cup of coffee and start up a conversation.
You need donuts?
No donuts. I do scones.
Chief, which Starbucks?
It's the one right over on Main Street, right by Walmart.
Oh, the Walmart one? Okay.
Starbucks North, as we call it. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, chief.
All right, so I'm here to tell you all about all the other wonderful things that are happening here in American Canyon over the next two weeks. So also on the 20th is AC's Night Out at American Canyon High School from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. On September 21st, we have karaoke night at the Doubletree from 6:00 to 8:00. The following evening is live music at the Doubletree from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. On September 23rd, we have Coastal Cleanup Day from 8:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. That event is actually fully, it's full, so this is just more of an information that that's going to be happening down the wetlands in several locations throughout the city. And then also on the 23rd, we have a stray and feral cat management fostering 101 class that's going to be held at the Adult Activity Center and is free to the public and it's from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. And then on September 26th, we have the American Canyon Fire Protection District Board Meeting at 6:30 p.m. And then on September 28th, we have the Planning Commission Meeting at 6:30 p.m. And then on September 28th, we have karaoke night at the Doubletree from 6:00 to 8:00. And then the following evening, we have the live music at the Doubletree from 6:00 to 8:00. And then on the 30th, they're also doing a Movies Under the Stars and featuring 50 First Dates. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we had, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, very good. Moving on with our agenda, we got, hang on a second here, find the page. I think it's Council Committee Reports. Yes, here we go. And after that, any future agenda items? So, Councilmember Oro, anything to add to yours?
Not at this hour, sir.
All right. I like the way you put that. Councilmember Joseph?
Just a quick plug for the Pumpkin Path on October 7th at Wetlands from 10:00 to 2:00.
Okay. Vice Mayor Pierre Washington, anything to add?
Just real quick, just want to say we went to that ACMS 25th anniversary and I thought Principal Carl Lisa did a really good job coordinating that whole thing, so it was really nice. That's why we're still wearing our beads from that event. End of the month, end of the summer thing that you did, Mr. Holly, I thought was excellent, you know, showcasing the people that just got promoted in our city.
Oh, yeah.
You know, just showing that we appreciate what they've been doing, just having the chance to see, you know, what the Napa Junction facility is looking like now, how it was maybe just four months ago and how it is right now. Outstanding. And also for the, last Saturday, I did attend the AC Stray and Feral Cat Presentation and they were very, very complimentary of you, Maria, our Assistant City Manager, for your help in helping them out and stuff like that. I mean, they mentioned it several times, so thank you for your hard work with that. And that's all I have to add. Thank you.
Councilmember Abadamos?
I echo Councilmember Oro's sentiments and I'll see most of you at the League tomorrow.
Okay. Well, I'm looking forward to the League of California Cities Annual Conference and for the North Bay Division, we'll have a new president representing the North Bay Division, Councilmember Mariam Abadamos. So I'm looking forward to that.
That is true. It always happens right before my birthday, too. It's my birthday weekend.
When is it?
My birthday?
When?
It's on Sunday.
Oh, wow. Well, happy birthday.
Thank you.
In advance. Very good for you. Evening at the Ruins was a huge success this year. I think the goal was more than achieved. I'm hearing something in the neighborhood of 350,000. That was out on public media. The 9/11 Memorial at the Firehouse was, it's always very moving and it certainly was enough information on the national news media about all the impacts of it. And you hear, it's moving to hear people who are very directly impacted by it, either through the loss or managed to survive. And I'm just, I feel grateful that we do recognize that every year. Working Families was also, that's from the Central Labor Council, Napa Solano. Good meeting and discussion on things that are going on. Napa Vallejo Waste Management Authority had a nice presentation on cost estimates for projects there and operations. They did a good job on that. Again, ACMS 25-year anniversary celebration today. I just happened to be driving by and they got the big reader board sign on the, they said, oh, come by 4:00 to 6:00. And I happened to run into Vice Mayor Washington somewhere and said, well, I'm going to go, oh, well, let's go check it out, see what's going on. That site is amazing. I mean, I don't know if anybody, everybody's had a chance to walk in there. Did you go in knowing what it looked like before, what it was like now? Yes, we deserve this. It's that good. It's just quite an improvement. And they do seem to manage student activities there well, from what I can observe. And yes, the, really appreciate the end of summer luncheon. That was a good move. You know, thank yous are important to staff and recognition and honoring their achievements and what they contribute to their work, yeah. So I look forward to having, seeing that again. And that would conclude my report, so thank you. Future agenda items? No, we have some listed here, we'll get through them. Okay. If there's nothing further, council? Thank you very much. We have concluded our work. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Good night, American Canyon.
Thank you.